Group is two.
Ooh.
Yeah, who's the sixth one? Somebody up there?
Injury is a select.
Injury is on select, but yeah.
Oh, of course, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, good.
So you have your.
Um. Yeah, the, the budget committee has a piece of business first. We have to reappoint our officers.
Thought we did.
Well, I, I was last, last week, did you?
No, but I thought we didn't really meet one more time before this with the.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we did, and we, we did.
Yeah, but was that part of the relief? I'm stuck with it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not getting out of it that easy, I guess.
Give you a raise.
No.
All right, so were you a consented or who? So me, you?
Yeah. Yes, um, we're all three.
Yeah.
But I thought also, um, I can never remember his name. Bruce Rockwood?
So we did it in the fall?
Yes, yes. He's, he's.
In the fall, oh.
Okay. Well, with that, because all your business is settled, you can't get out of it, so. I'll, I'll call the select board to order for a joint workshop with the budget committee Thursday, February twenty second. We do have Andrea is on the big screen over there, so we have all five of the select board members here. And with that, do we, we need to recap for anything last time? Are we good to get started on the presentations, whatnot? Andy?
Anyone has a question on like?
Yeah, is any questions from last week's meeting? Everybody good? All right, don't see any hands, anything good?
Yeah.
Um, where do you want to start with? Do you have anybody in particular you want to start with presentations or?
Still working through primarily the operating budget. I don't know if you want to start with Jason?
Yeah.
Police Department budget.
Yeah, I would say so.
We have, uh.
You're here, you're here first.
I'm here.
Are you sure you want to go first?
I know.
So we're going to start with, uh, so just a little bit of housekeeping, everybody. Um, we're going to be starting with PD, which is on page twenty-four. Um, if you have any questions or comments, just reference the page number and then the line item. So like under PD, we have postage ten-ten, just so we can kind of follow along. Um, but with that, uh, Chief, you're in the hot seat.
I want to take it from here.
So.
Good to see everybody again. Um, yeah, so I think you've all got the budget in front of you. But generally speaking, for the most part, um, everything stayed, with the exception of, uh, pay, everything stayed pretty much the same as last year. Um, I will go over a couple of the major increases outside of payroll, which is going to be thirteen dash thirty-eight, which is going to be software and licenses. There was an increase there of about five thousand dollars. Uh, that's something.
Twenty-four.
Sorry.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Twenty-four.
So you'll see that the, the, the overall is at sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, just an explanation on that, we've entered into a contract with Axion, which is our cruiser cameras. Um, we used to use a company called Watchdog, and unfortunately, the cameras just, I mean, they were ten years old. In fact, we got longer out of them than the company had ever seen, so we milked them as long as we could. Now, that particular, uh, camera system, we had to do all of our own uh, storage. So every single time the camera came back in, we would have to download it onto a memory stick, bring it inside, and then download it into our hard drives. And as Cheryl can attest to, uh, it just became really problematic because every time your lights came on, it, 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 the camera was running. So, um, Axion, which is the same company that we utilize for our body cameras, um, gave us a quote amongst all the other companies that we, that we Watchdog included, and Axion was the best deal, and we already use them for body cameras, and they sync together, which would mean that every time we activate our body camera, the cruiser camera will come on and vice versa. So in the event that you forget to turn one on, when you get out and turn the other one on, it automatically activates. And there was a lot of, a lot of benefits to going with the Axion. They're just, they've been a great company to deal with. So that's the increase. Instead of spending the thirty-five thousand dollars upfront, we entered into a five-year contract with them, which is where the fifty-one hundred, oh, fifty-one hundred, fifty-one dollars and twelve cents came into play. That's essentially the addition, the additional amount that was added to that line item. Any questions on that increase from anybody? No, pretty self-explanatory. Okay, thank you. Um, couple of small decreases, uh, the fuel. I know I put in a department request of sixteen-four. I know my boss put in fourteen-three-fifty, uh, just to, to quell that question.
You're on twenty, yeah, twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I apologize. Yeah, um, twenty-five, twenty-five. Um, I simply went with last year's number mainly because I can't predict what gas is going to do. And the last year we went into this, it went up a dollar eighty-five in like two months. So I, I, I simply put into the sixteen-four because we were able to function off the sixteen-four successfully. We're very lucky that it's down to three dollars, and let's cross our fingers that it stays that way. And I, and Andy's spot on. If, if we averaged out the gallons based on the, a three-dollar-and-fifty cent price, the fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars would be adequate. If gas does happen to go above that three-dollar-and-fifty cent per gallon, you don't have a lot of wiggle room on the.
We'll use Andy's credit card.
Well, you, no, we, and listen, and the fact of the matter is, we do have ways we can mitigate this. The unfortunate part is, in order to mitigate an overuse of fuel means that my staff aren't out on the roads driving around. Right? So, you know, if we start to see that this becomes ma- majorly problematic, we can talk about that. So, um, but that was the decrease in that line item from sixteen to fourteen. Um, everything else stayed the same. I did not increase vehicle maintenance. Why I did not do that was because we are on par for getting a new cruiser this year, so I only typically have to mess with that vehicle maintenance line when I have two cro- cars that are completely out of warranty. And in today's day and age, it's a thousand dollars just to get a computer looked at, you know, so, um, no, there, I don't have anything to do with retirement. That's all outside of my realm. Um, other than that, we get down to, I saved a little money on some membership stuff, but again, not huge, but it's something, a hundred dollars. Um, that sixty-one, sixty-one was the decrease there. Uh, the other increase, which really wasn't that substantial, but it's eighty dash fifty, which is PD overtime and holiday pay. Uh, it's an increase of eleven hundred and fifty dollars, and that's simply based upon the, the three percent COLA increases to the staff this year, and I have to make up that on the overtime amount and their holiday buyout amount. So again, it broke it down. Four hundred dollars of that was an increase to the holiday buyout, and seven hundred and fifty was the increase to the overtime budget. And I simply go and take how many hours of overtime they have and add that additional, that three percent on to what that would be if they mimicked it again. Um.
Question.
Sir.
You feel you have overtime under control?
Best we can. I mean, overtime's, uh, I'm, I'm going to do this.
Yeah.
Still fully staffed, still have the same staff, still have the same reserves. So, you know, anything can happen. If somebody can get sick and hurt, and we may have to utilize that line more. Um, I will tell you, for me personally, I'm salaried. Uh, I generally try to take a shift or two if I can to eliminate some of that overtime, and it, and it reminds me and it keeps me out into the public and keeps.
Yeah, it's good.
You know, it is great. Yeah, so, um, yeah, the overtime is, is, is unpredictable, right? And we, we try to go by what we've had in the past and try to make it fair and equitable for the town and, 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 and the taxpayer. So.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I just asked because I still remember the years that we were fighting our way through uncontrolled overtime, and that's not to imply that it's uncontrolled.
No, no, sure.
I just thought I'd check in on that.
It's fair, yeah, and, and I think it's, it's been working, but, you know, again, with the loss of an, with the loss of an employee or a position, or somebody got really sick, or a family member gets really sick, I mean, that, that can very quickly get eaten up.
Happens.
It does, it does, and we'll mitigate that and we'll deal with it when the time comes. Question.
Do you have, uh, any noticeable increase in crime that requires more police attention?
That's a great conversation, and that's a conversation that we could have all night long, but, um, our statistics are pretty well on par with what they've been. Crime-wise, the only thing that really fluctuates, um, really fluctuates is going to be your reported theft crimes. Because unfortunately, we're dealing with a, with a, a, a situation where not a lot of our businesses want to call and report crimes anymore because they have in the past and they haven't been prosecuted. But again, that's a story that, that would take me down a rabbit path that nobody in here wants to get on right now. So everything's, no- nothing's really getting better or worse. Our motor vehicle stuff is, are pretty well on par. Our motor vehicle accidents are all on par.
But break-ins to vehicles.
We, we, we mitigated that a long time ago. We've been very fortunate. We have very, very, very few burglaries, real burglaries.
About the situation with the hospital, yeah.
That's, that's after our last meeting last year. We, I don't know if we've responded there more than half a dozen times. We put our foot down and had a great conversation with them, and it was, it was agreed upon that that wasn't going to be a service we were offering anymore, and they've figured it out. However, that's happened.
I'm just curious, in terms of, um, interactions with people as a police force.
Yep.
How, what percentage are folks from Dammer Scott and how many people are not from Dammer Scott?
I don't even dare say, Dan. Um, I, I, I would, from a, from a negative standpoint, meaning, meaning from the criminal side? I guess is what you're asking.
So is it, you know, in terms of police?
Yeah, so, so that's a really great question that I wouldn't even dare put a a number on, um.
Thinking of it, just, you know, Dammer Scott is a service center.
Yeah.
So, you know, even though we're a town of, you know, a couple thousand, but it feels like we're, we have to have the infrastructure of a city of fifteen thousand, so.
I was gonna say, well, for the ten or fifteen thousand people that are here every day, you know, that's a, if you don't mind.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Because that's part of the cost of being a service center.
I can look at those.
Like ten percent.
Yes.
Dammer Scott and ninety percent is just people not from Dammer Scott, then.
If I had to make a, if I had to make an, I, I won't say a guess, right, based on my knowledge of what we deal with, generally speaking, we're dealing with people that are not residents of our community that are coming here. Like, for instance, most people that are stealing from our stores are, are not residents of Dammer Scott. They're coming from somewhere else. They're either being dropped off or driven in. They're making, they're, they're stealing their belongings, they're getting caught, and, uh, and then they're going back to wherever they live. So it's not my residents that are stealing typically.
Yeah.
Domestic violence crimes, again, we're, we're, uh, I'm going to find that out, or at least get you a far better number.
Just, I'm just.
It'd be a great question.
That'd be a number of some, I think, merit to the general population. They have some sense of.
Yeah.
How we're treating each other.
Can you?
Oh, clarification on that. Are you talking more tourists? Or are you talking Loudoun County outside of Dammer, outside of Dammer Scott?
Outside of Dammer Scott residents, yeah. Not typically, not typically tourists. We don't have a lot of tourist crime, per se, other than maybe motor vehicle crashes, maybe OUIs, operating under the influence charges, stuff like that, but people who are, you know, traveling here from another state just to steal from our Hanaford, that's not typically what we're seeing. We're seeing a lot of transients. That seems to be really, or unhoused, I guess, is the proper term. We do deal with a lot of that that are stealing, you know, um, it's not that they're just stealing food, but let me, let me just kind of jot that down real quick, folks, just so I can remember.
And I have.
Go ahead, I can, I can do both.
For, for point of reference for you, because something you just said, um, when I was a selectman, I, I did some research to determine what our daytime population was.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that is to say, uh, off-season, weekday daytime population, and it was very easy back then to justify ten thousand. So you just used that number.
Oh, yeah. It's probably, it's probably higher than that.
You is, is, I, I think it's low now.
I would agree.
All right, all right. So, so we're, I, I haven't done any research to, to figure it out, but that was the people, the people employed here and doing business here. All right, and I used numbers from the public library and, and number, numbers. So I felt good about the ten thousand. Um, I have to guess we're probably.
It's gonna be at least, at least.
Twelve, fourteen, or, I mean, yeah.
Well, ten to fifteen.
You know, the bridge, the road traffic count data.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
They'll put out counters every year, different places, and the, the last one they did, that was twenty-two or twenty-three, but that bridge between the two villages was just under eleven thousand average per number of vehicles.
Vehicles.
Yeah.
I see where, I mean, we average.
Road.
That's a daily average.
And with more than one person.
Is it in February or July?
Average day.
But they, they took it, they took, I don't know what, I don't know what month they did the count without going in and looking at, but there's, there's a, a public viewer, the DOT public viewer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you can see the infrastructure, you can see the counts. Um, so it's a pretty helpful resource there. Um, but they, they do it for like a week probably, and then extrapolate the average for the year, so it's not hard number, but those are the numbers I know I refer to because it's something that's like.
Yeah.
There, and it's kind of a standard.
Yeah, but it's quite a difference between February and July.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Well, we have, we have traffic, the traffic, um, I won't call them cameras anymore, but the traffic data boxes that we were, we do the speed with.
Yeah.
Um, there are days on there where we can get fifteen thousand vehicles one direction.
Yeah.
One direction. I mean, we have January data where we did what, I, I can't remember, Andy, thirty-three thousand cars in a week inbound, inbound on Bristol Road coming in. Thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six. I don't remember what the data numbers were. I know they were astronomically high. When you think about, when you think about January, I could understand that in August. Um, but it was, it, yeah, the numbers are.
I just felt I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
For statistical purposes, you're using ten thousand.
Yeah, and I'm.
Wrong.
I'm, oh. Fair enough, I'll take it.
I, I can't quite say where it is, but it's someplace between there seven and fifteen at this point, certainly the people that are not just crossing the bridge, but that are here, living, working, shopping.
Sure.
Whatever.
Coming in from the north.
Yeah.
Coming in down, business for one.
You know. Yes, I agree. I agree. Good.
Right.
Yeah. Uh.
Anything else noteworthy?
So that's it. No, and then, of course, our, our payroll, I know, I know three percent is still substantial, but I will tell you, looking back on the last uh, three budget cycles, that's pretty decent compared.
I'd ask you to put that into a placeholder. I mean, this is a contract year. We're just starting contract negotiations, and so I put it in there as a placeholder, not to be naive that there won't be, not to suggest that's what it will be, but I just wanted to put a placeholder for, you know, what's kind of been an average, um, so that we know overall what the number might look like more closely.
Yeah.
And I had a typo there that it's per COLA, it's not per COLA, it shouldn't be, you know, pending contract negotiations.
Yeah.
And then, as Jason said, that same thing applies, you know, that trickles into the overtime and in the FICA, uh, the retirement's based on that. Retirement's also another one that I've, um, had had him hedge that there might be a different program for law enforcement officers that they'd be enrolled in with this next CBA. It's not, it's all part of the negotiation, but it comes with a higher cost, so let's just put that in there tentatively for our sake, so we don't come back and thinking that, here's the number, and now we got to figure out, well, how much more? And so just.
It's just word. Just so I have a, bait in my head. When, when is the, um, contract negotiations supposed to start?
Um, has.
Oh, it has.
Yeah. So the contract's good through June.
Okay.
I'm gonna start in the sense that we received the first draft, and Daryl and I will be meeting with them soon.
Process.
Okay. Okay, so, so there will be most likely a new contract in place for July first.
Yes.
I, I have a question in this department. It's more for Andy.
Okay.
Um, on, uh, forty-forty, the health insurance?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, in, in an environment where health insurance is, is climbing at tremendous rates, uh, what are you thinking of doing differently that's dropped that line so far?
So the, I mean, mostly historically, but I bear to say, you know, recent past, we tend to hedge a little bit on that. You got X number of people employed in the department that are paid out of this department budget. Um, not all of them take the maximum premium afforded to them, family or spouse coverage. Um, but should that status change in any part of the year, or another different employee come in with a different status, we typically budget on the higher side to accommodate that change should it happen. And so what I proposed for this year is we pull that back down a little bit to budget what has been traditionally known and used, and then try to start funding the gap in a reserve line, which we already have as like a payroll liability. Uh, but to start to fund it there, so if in a given year it changes, we've got the reserve to cover it.
Yeah.
And then we can just budget it more appropriately the following year, but instead of carrying a now twenty to thirty thousand dollar bucket, PD and admin, um, which is what we've been doing.
Hmm. And I don't know, with our employment being as stable as it's been, maybe we've got a, you know, maybe that usage is stable too.
Don't jinx it.
Surprises.
Don't jinx it.
I'm, I'm talking about wish cast it.
Okay, fair enough.
I, I have one last question.
Yes.
Um, page twenty-nine, I don't know that anyone's going to talk to it, but hate to think of police departments' revenue, but there's a, there's a little revenue section there, um, and there's nothing filled in for twenty-five and by either the department or the manager, and I don't know if there's any thinking around that and what people are.
So that's, this is a fairly new thing for me. This is something that I'm used to seeing, um, and, uh, in full disclosure, I don't think Andy and I talked a whole lot about this, really, so.
It's the same thing you're talking about. I mean, all, I mean, there's the money, the way that we raise, and it comes in, it's all hit just as a general offset. So I know some people think, well, we're just giving tickets so we can raise money. It's like, well, that's not what we're doing.
Yeah, right.
Doing tickets because it's the ordinance calls for it. Um, so for those folks that know, it, it all goes into the general fund, the general offset on the warrant. Um, I didn't put it in there, it was probably as much of an oversight, but also it's a little unknown too. I mean, we have the averages, the, looking back at like parking fees is one I know we get a lot of talk about in the summertime. Um, you know, with COVID in twenty-twenty-one, I think you guys were pretty much not doing those.
Correct.
Twenty-one.
Correct.
Um, so you see, it was three hundred and six hundred and fifty that year, um, year-to-date through, through December. This year was forty-two hundred. It gets closer to seven thousand now, potentially, um, for the year, um, on that one. So that one's there. The miscellaneous, I, I think we have, I think I grouped that in to be um, income from like Pumpkin Fest or, um, the hospital. And so again, that's Pumpkin Fest is a little more known. Um, it does happen every year, the hospital one, like I said, this year, they haven't been there a lot, so. To try and budget for things that aren't guaranteed, I mean, we can try and offset a little bit, um, if we want to put that in there.
Yeah. Well, you know, because, you know, twenty-twenty-three actual was twelve thousand, the budget was nine, we're at ten right now, and we still have some time to go. So I, I know it's ten thousand, you know, it's, right? It's not immaterial, it's not huge either, but.
Well, and it gets a little tricky too, when that, it, we're not doing it for revenue. Right? You know what I'm saying? The tickets, it, it becomes very tricky. The whole dynamic of the parking tickets are tricky, and, and in fact, last year, we tried to change the verbiage on parking enforcement officer to a parking ambassador, right? And it went from wait for them to do something silly and write them a ticket to they're putting ten, fifteen miles on per day to prevent them. There was more education on, can you please not park there? And this is why you don't park there versus let's just go give them a ticket and then have to, me have to deal with them yelling at me about the ticket after and say, how dare you, you're just doing this to pad your budget and trying to explain to them, I don't have a revenue line. I don't make money off of your tickets. Don't park there, I don't want your money. It's easier that way, right? I want you to leave after you shop so the next person can come and spend money in our town.
If we leave it like this, that, that's, that's your defense, which we didn't.
Well, I'd like to say that was why, I just, I missed it. Right, exactly. Exactly, so.
Jason, I have a question. It's, it's for slip, concealed weapons.
Yep.
They bring in money?
Yeah, so they have to pay. We get, I think, and please don't quote me, I think we get two dollars. The state gets twenty. Do you remember?
The state gets twenty-five. No, state gets twenty, we get five.
Yeah, okay, five dollars.
So it's only voluntary.
Right.
Correct. It, it used to be in Maine, you had to have a concealed weapons permit if you wanted to carry a firearm. Now it's an open carry state, which means as long as you're not a prohibited person, you can carry a gun anywhere you want. The, the concealed weapon becomes valuable because there are still states that reciprocate Maine's concealed weapons permit. So if you wanted to go to New Hampshire, you can't go to New Hampshire with a gun on your side, but you can go to New Hampshire if you have a concealed weapons permit, you can have that in your vehicle. So the, the bottom line was, is the state gets a whole lot of money, and they don't have to do anything. And we have to do all the work on these concealed weapons permits and do all the backgrounds, and we get to keep five dollars. But we have to have a revenue line for that because we're, we're not supposed to make money, right, as the police department. So we're just kind of basically saying that we're getting five dollars to spend two hours on somebody's form. But anyway, does that make sense? That's what it is. Okay. Yeah.
Uh, Jason?
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with our, our traffic fine policy in terms of you, we're not trying to make money off it. Nevertheless, it is used as a, hopefully to influence people to behave.
Sure.
How are we doing on collecting?
Uh, well, that's, I, I think we're actually doing pretty well. I, again.
Are we still using somebody to collect for us? We, didn't we? Ja- Jason, uh, I don't know, didn't we?
Well, the, so the, 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 the structure was simply, if you didn't pay, it would be doubled. You had X amount of time to pay that parking ticket. If that parking ticket did not get paid, then we would send you another delinquency notice saying that now you owe us fifty dollars instead of twenty-five.
There were years where we weren't collecting the fifty dollars any better than we were collecting the twenty-five.
Correct.
And so we went to an outside firm to.
Yeah, we tried it.
Commission, I guess.
We tried it and. Yeah.
We use it for one or two years.
Yeah, it, 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 it wasn't at all beneficial, um, and, uh, and what we found is it ended up causing more hate and discontent with the person who parked there, um, and we still didn't get our money. Uh, so no, so, um, again, the way we changed our, the ambassadorship side of this versus regular parking enforcement was that there are far more egregious um, complaints. There are far more egregious tickets that were given. They're not just frivolous tickets, not that we ever were frivolous, but if that makes sense. So the parking enforcement officer is now required to take a picture from every angle of the vehicle and every single ticket that they write. End of story. We give them the phone, they take their photos, they download them onto a, to a, the hard drive when they get back. We send when there's an appeals process and/or somebody wants to arbitrate this ticket, we just send them the pictures to say, if you want to continue to move forward this, here's the proof that we have. I'm not willing to arbitrate this. I'm not willing to, to do anything other than accept the fine. Mo- I, I don't know if there's very many people that, once they look at the, the, the pictures, they don't say, oh, yeah, I, that was definitely egregious. And we seem to get paid pretty well. I, again, I don't, I look at, I look at Cheryl because in full disclosure, I don't get those numbers typically. It's typically the fines get paid through the town, and then, uh, whatever we have for delinquency, and we send something out in the middle of the winter time. Springtime rolls around, Joanne and I will sit down and meet and say, hey, how many, what do we have owed to us? What are those cars? Because that's something we want to pay attention to, because after three non-paid tickets, we have a right to tow their car. We have a right to seize their car and tow it until they pay the tickets back. I think that's only happened once in the entire time that I've ever been here. That's not the goal. The goal is not to take their car away over a twenty-five-dollar parking ticket. The goal is to get them and try to help them. I've even called them and said, can I give you some advice on where to park so I don't have to tow your car next time? Like, I don't know why you're continuing to park in this one spot and what, why you think this is your spot, but, uh, and that seems to be really effective. They're very happy that they got the call and they know, oh, I can park over here. Thank you. And then they'll pay their, their ticket, and then they'll stop parking illegally. So that's the concept of the new, bless you, the new way that we're trying to do this is more of an information and an informative ambassador-type role to be able to have documentation to say, this is where you can park in town, please don't park here again. Does that make sense? So.
Yeah. You sent Cheryl out to collect.
I sent Cheryl out to collect, yeah.
Yeah.
Nicknamed Vinnie.
Mary, yes. Um, no, I think, so that's, I also think this is a question more towards Andy, the building on what you were saying about you not wanting to present as you getting revenue. Is it possible we can move those six or eight lines up to the administrative revenue lines and just put them in there?
Put them anywhere we want. Right now, again, the warrant article that the voters vote on, it's just a complete general offset. All revenue falls on one warrant line. And we put it anywhere we want. I put it there because it is revenue of the police department.
More for, is it more for reference right now?
I think the most important thing is like.
Transparency.
Continue to let people know, like, we're not, we're doing this because of an ordinance in place. The voters voted on an ordinance saying, here's what we expect for parking enforcement. And, you know, it's just, it's.
We're not, we're not making payroll, right?
Right.
Payroll.
It's transparency, right? It's transparency.
From the payroll.
In this context, it's just reference.
Correct.
For that, for that, what.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's the first year we've done it this way. Too, where we've attached the revenue line to the, the department.
I seem to remember people's books at the meeting asking questions last year, so somehow this document gets up.
It's also, I mean, I don't want to go too far down this, but on the parking thing, I mean, just as a reminder for us as a those that are here, I mean, we do. Probably need to figure out the changes to the parking ordinance, the two-hour restriction and limits on hours parked are very difficult to enforce now. And no longer market car tire by law. And so we, you know, your options are camera. And having someone watch the camera or some sort of metered type system.
They have handheld devices that are around ten thousand dollars.
Right.
The harbors use them.
I mean, a big part of our ordinance is the expectation that there be the turnover available for other people to come in next to the business or to have something to eat or visit. And that a lot of our spots, I mean, what used to be two-hour parking, I mean, all we're limited now is handicap boat permit, boat trailer. Or those that are simply not parked in a spot.
We call those the foolish parking.
Bigger discussion.
Right, yeah.
So that that's a.
Do on our mind.
We want to do capital reserve, PD capital reserves.
That one will be pretty quick.
Yeah, I will say that some some of the good news for the people who are seeing this line is we're not projecting a twenty twenty-five. Number, in other words, if you put, if you had filled that line in. Then people could say, look at that, and they're trying to earn this much.
Yeah.
Next year, no, we're not.
I have no revenue goals.
Yep.
What page are we at? That's on, that's on the handout, right? The separate.
Page thirty here.
Yeah.
Seven, right, on that other.
On the budget book, right?
All the news stuff.
On the news stuff, yeah, on the on the separate, everybody has that separate handout, Andy.
That's right.
With the pink, with the pink cover sheet. Yeah.
I have a question. Are we voting tonight on departments or?
No, no, we'll do that, as we did last year separately. Yeah, this is just.
Can.
Is it in the big budget book? I apologize, I didn't print that off because it was only one page.
Grab one of the, Jason, you're good, dude, it's in that one there.
Oh, it's in this one right here, okay.
There's a purple page about halfway through. It's page thirty-seven on the second.
Page thirty. Seven, right, thirty-seven.
Well, I can talk to it anyway. I don't need it in front of me because it's very basic.
Yeah, I think the the for the dollar amount, there's no change in the dollar amount to be. Requested, there's thirty thousand dollars again. Work with Jason and try and look at, try and forecast a little further out the vehicle replacements. And if we're going to be able to afford those with cash, I mean, they're lower, much, much lower than. Public works equipment in some cases, or certainly some other fire trucks. And so if that's something we want to try and reach and attain to pay with is cat with cash, I mean, coming up with a more regular contribution to that, and so. And one of the changes, if you speak to the, last year, there was conversation about putting money in there for the cruiser as well as the system. Communication system. So that. When county's communication dispatched.
Oh, yes, yes, the new computer. Yeah, we can, yeah, for sure.
You can, you can share that one if you want, but.
Yeah, so first off, again, hitting on the vehicles, they've gone up, I don't know, thirty-five percent or so. What what we would have been able to buy our last, the F one fifty, we paid thirty-two thousand. They're closer to forty-eight thousand now to buy the exact same vehicle. And they all are terrible. Everything breaks now. They're, anyway, it's very frustrating. So. We're no longer in the times when we can even buy a vehicle for fifty thousand, right? When everything is said and done, just the, just the vehicle alone. Is going to cost us fifty thousand dollars and then to equip it. And of course, you know, doing this every four years, which is pretty standard, the vehicles are being redesigned. So all the fancy equipment that we put in there, they don't fit anymore. So none of the consoles that we have all of our gadgets in. Bolt in anymore. So we're able to reuse, say, radios. And like the cage that goes in the back, we're able to reuse some of that. But for the most part, we're talking about re-equipping vehicles every four years. Simply because things just don't fit because they're just redesigning all the time. So. Yeah, we're you're upwards of the sixty thousand dollars every single time we're replacing a vehicle now, when we have to re-equip that. Put the lettering on it and so on and so forth. And then, so we are no longer. The computer system that we have used for since two thousand and four in Lincoln County, which we called IMC. It's how we keep all of our all stored data, write our reports and all that. The the company bought it out a few years ago, Central Square, and they stopped updating it. So they didn't get rid of the program entirely, but they said we will no longer be doing anything to the program. So as long as a program doesn't crash. You guys are. Which is crazy to me because they're not maintaining it. We're paying them seventy-five hundred dollars for maintenance fees for them to give us. The the allow us to continue to use this program and make sure it's working, except every single time something breaks, they've simply said, we're not going to replace that. So deal with it. So in order, we were very fortunate that Central Square. Built another computer system, which is great, and it was eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the county to take this on. And originally. The original conversation was is that we needed to take seventeen percent because we have a an MOU. With the sheriff's department that talks about how each department, maybe it's twelve percent, each department, each municipality. Pays a percentage and then the Lincoln County pays the lion's share because they're just the larger agency compared to the smaller ones. So when we originally went through this and did all of this, the original anticipation was is we were going to pay about fifteen thousand dollars. To get this program up and going. Well, where we were fortunate was the Lincoln County had the ARBA funds. And there was enough of a of a discussion and the need for this computer system that the Link- Lincoln County. Lincoln County as a whole decided to pay for the entire computer program. And we didn't have to take that original burden on. Good, which I think that's what the ARBA money was for and that's that's great. So we had originally, Andy and I had originally talked about, we can't take this, we can't take the absorb this all at once. So we were going to put it in the capital reserve to be able to. Fund that, knowing that the program takes eighteen months to build out. So by the time this program actually was going to come into effect, it was originally going to be twenty twenty-five. So we figured if we were able to do that original thirty thousand dollars that it was going to cost us, we could do that in two budget cycles. Fortunately for us, we don't have to do that. It's already in there now. So that's where that fifteen, it was fifteen thousand for a car and fifteen thousand for the computer. We're good with the computer. So I think we just talked about leaving it in there for the car and any other. Items that could come up in that, even if we lost an engine in one of our cruisers. It's a fifteen thousand dollar expense to put a an engine in and we can't go without a cruiser, right? So I I guess. To go on that is simply that if you guys see that says fifteen thousand for the computer and fifteen thousand for a vehicle. It will be thirty thousand towards the vehicle, not fifteen for the computer because they paid for it for us. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
But that's it.
So the software crashes and you have a seventy-five hundred dollar requirement to pay maintenance, right?
Yep.
They not fix it?
They they will upgrade it, they won't do anything to it, meaning if that system were to actually crash to the point where it's not repairable.
Yeah, okay, but it hasn't, it it hasn't crashed.
No, no, absolutely not. The the way that the way that they explained it was that, I mean. They're going to keep it going as long as they can because half of the state of Maine uses this program. We have all of our documentation is in there, all of our reports are in there. And we share that documentation all the way to York, Maine, and sometimes all the way up to Caribou are the companies that use this IMC. So. It's not that they basically said, have a nice day, but they're looking at a way to make more money, right? Build this really, and the new program is going to be fantastic. It's going to be really, really great. I'm going to be able to put my policies on there. I mean, it's it's going to be really effective. But again, the original quote was one point two million. And then somehow we managed to get it down to this eight hundred thousand, figuring things out, and then the county paid for it. But that's a giant expense. And we have to have a computer system. I will tell you that if next month, this current computer system were to crash. And detonate and we can't get to our records, you want to talk about an interesting dynamic with FOIA requests? Or any criminal case that's currently pending and we can't get in there to get that. So it's a scary thing.
All right, anything else for? We good?
All right.
I think we're good.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
I got it on my notes in here.
Thank you.
All right, you grab Martha and or Patty if you want to. Or in the in the capital budget on page forty-eight of the capital budget. Go over your cemetery and then we'll jump to Michael's.
Perfect, yeah.
Let's lay out on these capital pages, I know is different. I was trying to give as much information on there as I could that made sense and so I had to show. The top there, the beginning balance, estimated beginning balance for next year, the appropriations and what's been appropriated and expended. Previous few years and then try to give you enough detail in there to explain why the funding proposal is what it is. So with that, the trustees met a couple, well, a few weeks back now and they've had some projects on the radar, there's some that might not be on there yet with a dollar amount. But you're still doing some research, but with that, I'll let Patty talk about some of the projects. All yours.
Thanks. Pretty much self-explanatory, I think, unless somebody has a question on any of the lines there.
Quiet.
Most of the people I work with are really quiet.
It's our our estimates, these are not quoted by contractors or anything that.
That's what made it, yeah. And this does the work that's going on right now, right?
It does not.
Is that up in the twenty-four expense?
We don't have, just to hear.
Going to take out.
Paid it yet. Yes, I did. I did account for that and the FY twenty-four expense was thirty-five thousand seven hundred. So I am accounting for that up to thirty-three thousand.
No, yeah, okay.
Well, it's an easy one. Nobody has any questions. Patty, you know, explanations? She has her, she has us programmed pretty well.
Thank you.
Thank you for spelling out Colmbarium now, I know. Is that the only thing we take away from the? That was my, yeah.
Try to help wherever I can.
Yeah, no, that's good.
All right.
We're discussing this. We reached over it last week.
Yep.
Well, I had to scoot in to get something from Karen, so.
And I had another meeting and wasn't supposed to be here that got postponed, so I could show up and here we are.
We had more to discuss for you, but I guess.
I think we're good.
Run while you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. Jake started on the.
Yep, they've pulled out the first section of stones and they've put hay bales in there so that we don't lose Mr. Walt's downhill. Until they get the new wall put back in. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Nice presentation. I wish you'd make it a little shorter, Patty.
All right, Michael, you're up now. You're going to shorten it up. You're going to be Patty.
So start on page twelve is the planning budget. That's the first part of the book.
How you doing, Michael? Great. I should say I have a planning board meeting in Newcastle at six o'clock, so. I don't want to see any reason we shouldn't be able to.
Sorry that Patty took so much time.
That's, yeah, that's why I mentioned it.
Oh, have we had it? We can start with any, I mean, like we've been doing any high points, you point out.
Um, you know, the, I have to admit, I've had to, I've kind of deferred to Andy on a lot of this because I've only been here for. Short amount of time, so I'm still trying to understand everything that's going on.
We throw them under the bus all the time.
No, I I did talk with them and kind of, and his after we had a conversation and. I think the the big things to just mention is the comp plan work that's still wrapping up. They'll be extending into next fiscal year. Some of that expense I did put a little bit into the cap reserve, another twenty-five hundred dollars for cap reserve to get us. At least any contracted services. There's some costs in in your budget for printing maps and that's kind of stuff that could help. Print the maps after some changes to that. I think the rest of it's pretty straightforward. The same thing on the health insurance line as we explained earlier, the difference between those two columns, showing you the. What it could be reported through our policy. Increase the, oh, we haven't used much of the mileage expense and I think that's just a matter of thirty-eleven. George primarily, but I don't think he's probably submitted mileage yet this year, so that'll, it won't be twelve hundred, but. There's some miles there and it's afforded to Michael as well. He travels for anything to work. There was a question I know Mary had raised regarding. So with Michael, Michael, if you're not aware, the position is shared with Newcastle. And when you get to page sixteen, see some of those revenues. And the question was, right, you were looking at that thinking that revenue is coming in plus we're budgeting to pay. Planner a certain amount, is that that those two added together?
I can't hear what she's saying.
It's all numbers, Andrea.
Okay.
Is that mic on by chance?
I don't think it's on.
No, it's not on.
It's on top. Need to switch it up.
Technical.
Um, so.
Last, we've, we've had those questions in the past.
Two.
It gets confusing.
Just tap it.
They'll just, it should just slide it up that little knob.
Well, I mean.
Red light that will come on.
Over the batteries, Dan.
It's a light, okay.
Biggest difference with that is. So a couple of years ago, we were assuming and and this was when we had it with Boothby the first year and then Boothby backed out. And we were fortunate Newcastle was ready to come in. And so what we did is we hired a person, assuming for the year that they're going to be paid as a full-time person. But if the contract falls through or the agreement falls through with your partner, the other town. Now you're telling the person you've hired, expect them to work for you, they're going to probably leave. And so. We run it all through our books. And so I suggested last year that we show the full hundred percent on the books. That's what's actually happening. And then we show that offsetting revenue. So when you take the the wage, health insurance, payroll taxes. The retirement.
So the fifty-three is inclusive of the entire compensation package, just not the salary.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Nope, that makes sense then.
Then we bill them monthly and it's been going, I think, pretty good with Newcastle since we've started with them. Which makes a lot of sense compared to where we were before. I mean. The the two town boards, select boards have been getting together, I think, two or three times now since the partnership and. There's some great things around housing and we have the shared harbor and shellfish ordinance stuff and just trying to find ways to work together where it makes sense. Michael's kind of that perfect in-between to help make some of that stuff happen, so.
Happy to be ambassador as well, you know, brand new, but.
He's going to do.
Yeah, parking ambassador too.
Yeah, when you're walking between the.
I have two lines where I'm wondering if that's what I'm seeing. Uh, one is fifteen fifteen, the drafting expenses here would appear to be double. We're getting reimbursed for half of that. No, why? So why are our drafting expenses double?
Anticipation of map revisions or changes following a potentially adopted comprehensive plan.
That's for your comp.
All right. And the other one is workers' comp. Is is that, is that a shared expense? It did, but this seems to be something that is echoed through some other departments here is that our. Workers' comp line proposal is up significantly. In in some other departments, this one, I've highlighted it here, but. What, that's line forty-one forty-one. And so we budgeted six-ten and now we're proposing thirteen, twelve-seventy-three and I just.
Looks like we might have under budgeted last.
Yeah, year-to-date is seven-sixty-four, so the budget's six-ten, we're over. The workers' comp for planning, is that? That's a, based off of what we are told.
The salary, yep. And that's just based off what we've been paying, same thing with the other departments.
And we offset, the Newcastle offset is included in that.
Yeah, the retirement, the workers' comp, unemployment, all of it, whatever we, whatever he costs us, we split it.
Okay, because in some of the places on the workers' comp line, some of the places throughout here, i- in the narrative on the right, under the notes. It says that Maine municipal has been telling us there will be no increases there. In adjoin to that statement, I see significant increases. That's why I'm wondering.
Previously, we just paid for, as an employee, we just paid for the code enforcement officer. Prior to Michael, that was all contracted, so we didn't have to pay the workers' comp for that first position.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, a good chunk of last year was contracted. Michael happened to be working with MCAGS last year. And Isabel, yeah, so we had two contracted services for half of the year last year as opposed to paying. He's there.
Okay. Could you talk about?
First one, oh, one ninety-nine, ten thousand dollars for the strategic planning software.
Yes.
Did you see the line again?
I don't know how to. The very first one.
Page twelve.
Zero one dot ninety-nine.
Um, so this is something I'm anticipating and it's not solely, that would solely be used by the planning department, but. With the comp plan, just again, anticipating a comp plan being approved, there's going to be a lot of items in there and goals or strategies to try and achieve. You know, and a software in my mind can help us, not just us internally, but be used as a tool. Some some of these programs like have a great public dashboard. And so if the public wants to know what we're up to, how are we doing on these goals, whether it's, you know. PSX resolve that we've adopted or the comp plan or a board strategic plan. And trying to put these into a program that is easy for us to kind of show progress on. It's transparency for the public to easily see, we can put it on our website. Some of these come with their own kind of website. And so it's affording us, it would afford us a budget to try and shop around for a program that would make sense to us.
Have you used one of these before somewhere?
I have not.
Well, how did you get interested in this? So how'd you find out about?
First started with a class I was in for the masters when I was pursuing it. And it was, it was just about performance management and then the strategic planning. I don't know if Mary's got experience in kind of the software portion of the strategic planning stuff, but. Yeah, I mean, I've been looking for the last couple of years into something that is a good dashboard for both the public, for the, for us to input. And help us track progress on it. We can use spreadsheets and create Gantt charts. It just, you you lose. Have enough there in my mind, it really show the public and tell the story, what we're doing.
Yeah, I know.
What I'd like to see us do is actually try and use it to present more in some way, maybe like a digital. Department report using the metrics that we're using to measure how we're doing or again, track our progress.
So is the number representative of something you know about?
Yeah, I've reached out to a couple vendors this year, I think three that I was pursuing, and that number would accommodate one of them of the three. And there were two others that were in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range, which I, that's two, we don't need that much. Uh, but there was one that was just under ten, that would feel pretty good and they have the ability if we ever wanted to expand. it's, uh, that's two, we don't need that much, uh, but there was one that was just under ten, um, that would feel pretty good, and they have the ability if we ever wanted to expand. Um, you know, they offer a digital budget book, they offer, um, I don't know if they offer full, like, budgeting in-house, your chart of accounts kind of stuff, but, um, there's probably five or six things you can add on if you ever wanted to, so it would all kind of be in one, one house, and you could connect your budget to these outcomes, um, if you ever wanted to.
And how would this integrate into, have you, have you thought about it, integrating it to the new website that you're thinking about as well?
Um, so the one that I've looked at, I mean, they kind of create their own landing page, and so you kind of point your site to that, and they kind of build one for you.
Okay, so it's really just a link or?
Well, it's a little extra, but I thought with that comp plan coming, and there was, I know some things before that doesn't feel like we're ever doing anything on it, and you know, sometimes we are, and it's just hard to, we're not reporting out, we're not you know, um, say tooting our own horn, but you know, uh, sharing the accomplishments as they happen, um, we kind of get stuck in the day-to-day, and, and they do take years sometimes to do, and so we can kind of show that progress, if we can break it down to show the steps that we're taking, and actually show people we are working towards, it just sometimes they do take longer.
Andy, is the one that you're looking at, would it also, would you be able to not just do the comp plan, but like the bike plan and the, you know, all the other groups that have put together plans and overlay them all?
Yeah, there'd be no, well, the one I was under ten thousand, there's no limit to the number of plans you can create and manage, um. Some of the, there was one other one that allowed you to kind of integrate and connect if you have multiple plans with some of them having shared strategy, same strategy, same goals, like you could kind of run them in there separately, but then tie them together, so if you can just check it off once, and it'll filters through the rest of them. You know, for the extra seven grand, I didn't think it was really worth doing that, we can track it in multiple versions if we need to. Um, but yeah, you'd be able to put multiple plans together.
Yeah, I, I just would say on that, I think that, um, one of the priorities that I'd like to set for, for me, or for the, for the position is just more engagement, and I think that this kind of, uh, software or this kind of approach is exactly, you know, what I've noticed is that when residents do come to meetings, they're, they're, they want information. So, which I imagine you probably get similar, um, feedback, so I think having something like this is, um, fits nicely within the kind of increased engagement, public engagement that I think is warranted for, for planning, so.
The only other thing I increased really was the planning board compensation, just due to it for consideration, um. Meetings tend to be relatively long at times, you know, they are going through a pretty legal review process, um, you know, Michael's there, staff support, I just kind of more for discussion's sake, um, if that's anything we wanted to consider, really, I mean, acknowledging it's really an important job, the way we've got to set up in our ordinance, there's a lot rides on their decision-making and the ability to do the findings of facts and present themselves in a very professional manner, um. And so I didn't know, I was just putting that out there, it's pretty modest before.
Backtrack to postage. It seems like postage is always jumping up every other day. Um, is two hundred dollars really reasonable? And is it only for the planning board mailings?
It is only for the planning board, or planning board mailings.
Oh, okay.
Some of the comp plan stuff, um, has been able to be booked to like the reserve line if it was specifically for the comp plan. Um, but it fluctuates so much, um, a lot of the mail, some of the mailing fees are, are borne, the costs are borne directly on applicants, and so it's not a pass.
We have another line for miscellaneous postage?
No.
No.
But, uh, that postage line is up pretty much throughout, and that's that's the fault of the guys down on Main Street.
I don't understand.
Charging more for stamps.
Oh, right, that's why, so we do a lot more emailing as opposed to.
Postage has gone up, and, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
So we're seven months into the year right now, and we haven't spent a dime on postage for the planning department yet, so.
Oh, not just the planning, I'm just saying the town.
Oh, yeah, and we increased it all through all the other departments.
Yes, yeah.
Department line item has a.
Yeah. Similarly.
Again, a lot of the mailing fees, you know, are offset, you know, because applicants do have to pay in some cases.
Okay, thank you.
That's what helps keep this one down, whereas the other ones, like, there's no offset for mailing a, a mail-in ballot request for voting, and we're paying for those, um.
That, that is, um, as far as, and I know we'll get to this at some point, is the revenue. Um, just after talking with George and looking at the fee schedule, there, I think there is a considerable amount more revenue that can come into the planning department for applicants. Um, the fees I don't think are particularly high for reviews, and I think this is a pretty reasonable area to say that, you know, when someone does submit an application, they're, they're very much using the, the service, if you will, so I don't think there's any reason that residents should have to pay for, um, you know, someone who wants to come in and take up kind of, u- use that resource, not that it should, you know, it's never going to be a hundred percent, it's not going to be run for a profit, but I think that you know, the amount of time that it takes to go through a site plan review or a, you know, shoreline zoning application, um, you know, whatever the fees are right now could certainly be, could be increased, and I don't think it would be, if we increase them, we would be increasing them to be reasonable rather than low, not unreasonably high, I think, so.
And we've had that discussion with Andy before about looking at the, the prospect for all the fee schedules in the town and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
That's something that's on the radar.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it'd be helpful too, perhaps to, you know, as you think about it, maybe we need to get to the recommendations later on, but to think about what are proposed there for fees, is there a percent that you'd like to see us try and hit to offset that planning department, because again, so much of it is driven to be here for applicants. And there is enforcement that you can't do all hundred percent of it, you know, from application fees, but uh, if, just give us some thought, I mean, right now, we're about, it's forty-seven thousand two hundred that's being proposed, um, less the contracted amount with Newcastle, so if you pull out that cost, um, a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar cost on our side to have the rest of that department, again, less Newcastle share. And so fifty percent of that saves sixty-two thousand dollars in revenue, so just think about it, you know, is there again, a fifty percent, seventy-five percent of men, number you want us to try and hit, maybe it's something that just increases over a few years instead of all at once. But we're at forty-seven thousand budgeted for sixty-two thousand is fifty percent, so we're not too far off if that would be a goal. That would help us with identifying what the fee schedule could look like, because we can go back and see what type of permits have been issued, how many, let's start to raise them that way.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and I, and I think also probably clarifying building permits versus planning applications that, you know, for George's review, um, they, they get kind of wrapped up together, but when you start going through planning board, it's, you know, that's clearly a separate review process that is much more, uh, kind of time-intensive. And then you still need to get a building permit, even though we're not doing, you know, uh, moveback enforcement, but it's still, it's kind of a separate thing, like, yes, now you can go build the thing that you've been permitted for, so I think there's, that's an area that probably should be examined.
Any other questions, comments on the planning operating?
We have to find a way to make him sit there till six o'clock, then.
Andy, capital reserves in that department, you've got, uh.
Uh, it was just that comp plan.
It's a comp plan one, right?
Suggesting, you know, we're, we're going to be a good chunk of the way through.
Page forty-seven.
A lot of the consultant fees, you know, by the time we get to the next fiscal year, but proposing that we do bring, um, or appropriate twenty-five hundred dollars just to kind of hedge our bet, there's going to be a little bit left in that, um, based on what we contracted with. I'm hoping that'll be enough to kind of carry us, and you don't see it in there for that five-year period, but I think it's in like twenty-thirty or thirty-one, you know, suggest that we start picking up funding that again in anticipation of the next one in ten or twelve years.
You got to do it again?
Yeah. And you can update them, you know, within the ten-year period, you don't have to wait for ten, twelve years to come up, so. Um, but at least for this year, suggesting a little bit in there to be able to.
That's a never-ending comp plan.
We need a ten-year break.
Right, no, any? Looks like we're good on that department?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mike, ready to your other meeting?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Oh. Cool. You got the other chief here now. How you doing, John?
Hitting the buttons over there on the computer.
On the Capitol or the regular?
Right.
Not to be a stickler, but since we're not really camera-oriented, et cetera, I think the budget committee should introduce themselves for the record. But it's like, since we're recording, so.
I should probably.
I'm sorry, say.
I'm Dick McLean.
I blew out a Tony.
Karen O'Brien.
Mary Devlin.
Thank you.
Except for my. I wasn't ignoring you, but we were sort of.
Showing that we're down. That one is also wrong.
And you've got a stop recording message up there on the big screen.
This weekend, yeah, yeah, we think it's, that's.
That wasn't with the actual budget, no.
So the introductions weren't recorded?
But not here.
You're not mentioning when.
I think, yeah, I think we got him showered, I think.
A little bit of detail, that's.
All right. Do it at the beginning next time too, especially where next time we're going to be voting.
Yeah.
Might be even more.
We, we just, we got it roll, got rolling here and didn't do any introductions, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know this guy, now you got to introduce yourself.
My name's John Roberts, I'm here, uh, representing the fire department.
So we're, uh, put page, page thirty-one, uh, fire department operating budget. All right. Everything good, everything's the same, nothing to talk about?
I think there's plenty to talk about, but, uh, for our, our budget, um, items, we tried to keep everything flat this year. Uh, we discussed it as a, as an engine company and thought that, uh, our priorities for spending this year are going to be more on the reserve side than the operating side. Um, so, uh, I also wanted to take a minute to thank Andy for increasing the payroll line item, but, um, our bylaws for the engine company state that, uh, um, you know, we kind of establish our pay rates at our, uh, annual meeting in January. Uh, and we did that, so, um, I'd request that when, uh, it comes time to approve the budget that, uh, uh, you go with the, the engine company's recommendation.
Is that lower or higher?
Lower.
I respectfully suggest that it stay as I recommend, because our payroll and our personnel policy is, you know, maybe independent a little bit of bylaws of the association, but neither way. I think it's important to try and stay, and I appreciate what the John and the company are trying to get at, but just don't want to see, of, of all the lines, that's the one we fall behind on, where we're making a ten or twelve, an increase two years from now, like we did last year, on, it's such a small number overall in the budget, I think it's just important to at least keep up with it. But that's all.
And, and if I made to remind you that the, the budget committee through its various makeups over the years, I think you know how we feel about that, we want to be sure that that, uh, you, you and your folks are, are being appropriately compensated, and, and so if if we, we're going with your number this year, just, I, I think this committee will always feel that way, so.
Yeah, I think, um, like I said, uh, when we get into the capital plan, um, we all felt strongly that, uh, the, the, the ask on that side is, is such that we wanted to come in flat everywhere else.
Yeah.
And so, um.
You know, best to make sure you boys get safe.
Yeah, and Andy and I haven't quite had the discussion yet on, you know, where we fall on real employees or not, so that's, uh, uh, other than that, um, you know, there's a few numbers that go up, there's a few numbers that go down. Um, the biggest increase is, uh, which I haven't had a chance to talk to Cheryl about, is under the insurance, um, line items. Which is on page says twenty-two. I think.
Thirty-three, though.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, maybe?
Thirty. Uh, health insurance, yeah, thirty, thirty-three.
Yeah, it's a liability insurance, um, and, and the reason for that is, uh, we haven't increased, um, our, our replacement value on, on the trucks, um, so this year, we're going to try to increase that number quite heavily, which is going to increase the cost of, uh, of the insurance. Um, the last time we really changed the evaluations was, I think, about eight years ago, and, uh, uh, what the trucks are insured for right now, if something did happen and we had to replace one, wouldn't even come close to uh, meeting that need, so. Um, similarly, uh, with, with turnout gears, um, we've kept the number the same, but instead of budgeting for three sets, it's going to budget for two sets. Yes. Yep, yep. So it's the same number as we had last year, but it's not planning on three sets, it's planning on two sets.
And where is that?
What number is that?
Um.
Fifty-six, fifty-seven?
Yeah. Fire department clothing uniforms.
Any, anybody have any specific questions on any of the line items on, uh, fire department budget?
Uh, just a, a, a small one, um, page thirty-one, twelve thirty-nine, um. Assuming that you pretty much have a sta- a steady number of, uh, CBA. How come that number varies so much for the testing each year? So this, this year, it's, it's down from last year's budget to the flow testing, I'm just curious, I notice it, it varies a lot, and is it based on usage or?
Um, we have to flow test the packs every year, sometimes we have to hydrostatically test the bottles. Um, think it's every five years, but please don't hold the mean on that. So every five years, it'd be a higher cost, because we have to do an additional test on, on the bottles and the packs. That's prob- that's probably the.
Yeah.
That probably accounts for some.
And I, I sort of, yeah, I sort of understand that, just my naive, I assume if you get twenty packs, the cost would be fairly steady through the years, and it, it, it goes like that, so.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's called equipment maintenance, so if we spend money on other equipment to maintain it, um, sometimes that will go onto that line as well, whether it was budgeted for or, or not.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Jumping back to uniforms, um, any new pieces of equipment in clothing? Any new gear or updates or improvements or out of date or transitional?
Um, so as of when I, I talked to our, um, gear manufacturer, uh, about six months ago, uh, there was still not a, um, PFAS-free gear that was passing NFPA standards. So, uh, right now, um, I believe it's just our outer, outer shell of the gear that we're buying now that, um, contains PFAS. Uh, the gear that they're testing, uh, tends to, um, break down and, and not last nearly as long without, without those chemicals, so um, there's no other options, uh, other, other than that. Um, so the gear that we've been buying is the same gear that is available now. I don't know if that answers your question or not, okay?
Yeah. Thank you. I have a question on page thirty-two, twenty-eight, thirteen, on pagers. Um, it would appear that we haven't actually purchased any pages since twenty-twenty-two, does that mean you're anticipating we'll have to purchase fifteen this year, if we're doing four to five a year?
No, we've, we've bought pagers, I don't know why it's showing as, uh, not none of the actual. Um, we just ordered five for this fiscal year, so this fiscal year would still be zero as, as far as FY twenty-four actual, but that will change in a, a couple of weeks.
Okay.
John, do you know when you order those, it just goes through, it's yearly through December?
I just ordered them, so we haven't, we haven't been billed for them.
So that's just a timing issue.
For this year, I don't know why in past years that's not showing up. Unless I coded them wrong when I submitted the bill.
Think whoever's paying from.
Any other questions on the operating budget?
And under that line item though, um, both the twenty-twenty-four budget and the twenty-two, twenty-five manager proposal, I think has a calculation error.
Um, you're on the pager lines for those.
The, the, the summation of radio purchase and maintenance total, the, the gray line. I think it grabs the vehicle fuel cost for some of those, and then that probably affects the overall budget at the bottom. Some of those, and then that probably affects the overall budget at the bottom.
Twenty-one seventy-five, it's set to sixty, it's not.
And I was just talking to Cheryl beforehand, under, under general equipment on the previous page thirty-one. Our budget last year was three thousand. Not seven thousand, but there was, uh, carry forward funds that got moved into there, so that, that changed the. The budget, but what we actually presented as a budget was three thousand, so it's not as quite as an abrupt of a decrease as, uh. As it's shown here. And then that also brings us in at pretty well even on our requests compared to last year, even though. I think the summation. Kind of shows a pretty significant decrease. It's actually pretty well, but what we requested was pretty well flat. So if those two things get taken care of, I think that evens it out.
Yeah, well, those directions, because you're at what? Minus four percent or something on your question.
Yeah, my number's, uh. Compared to what I submitted last year was, uh. Ninety-nine point nine seven percent of last year's, so pretty well. Pretty well flat. Yep.
Right. We want to do, uh.
I, I just have one question, um, and it's really just related to the firemen themselves, the volunteer part. I'm, I'm reading like in other communities that they're having a hard time. Sort of finding new firefighters men to, to volunteer for the forces as people sort of age out of the departments and stuff. Um, is that what we're experiencing, or are we having? Some success in terms of bringing your folks in and. Keeping them interested in being part of the department.
I think, uh, we've been a little bit more fortunate than, than some other departments. Um, I don't really have a, a reason for that. Other than, um, we were experiencing the same thing until we implemented a junior program. And that's been good to get, uh, get some younger blood interested. One of the challenges though is, is, uh. As those. Young people age and, and get to the point where they're probably not going to be living with their parents anymore. Is an area that I think we're very susceptible to losing a lot of that experience. So we're looking at some other ways to try to retain those people. Um, outside of. Outside of, uh, what's presented here. So I think. That's kind of, uh. Where we're at, we, we just lost one who's still going to be on the department, but he's going to be moving down south after he gets out of college, so. Staying, we lose one doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot, it is a lot for us. You know, we have. Probably eighteen to nineteen people that are active, so when you take one away, that's, you know, five percent. It doesn't take many, very many of those before, before it becomes. Um, pretty problematic, so. I, we're holding our own, but we need to. Be a lot more. Aggressive about retention and recruitment efforts.
Is there a requirement that, um, that the people in the department have to live in town?
Up until a few years ago, it was a pretty hard rule in order to join at least. Um, once they were on, on the company, we kind of. You know. If they live close, we left them on, but, uh. Uh, we changed that, um, a few years ago to add a, um, non-resident member to our, to our membership. Um, so it's a member that doesn't have voting rights within our association, but, uh, can come to the meetings, come to the training. Participate in, in, in everything else other than. Uh, uh, other than voting rights for changes to the association.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I just have my comprehensive plan hat on right now, thinking about housing and. And affordability and, you know, because the, just the, just making sure that people can live in town and it, it feels really important for. What you guys do, so.
See, the other fire departments, Waldenboro I know has a couple of firefighters that live in Nobleboro. So their other fire department's doing the same thing.
Yeah, um, at some point it starts becoming, uh, kind of like EMS where. It's not really an increase in the number of firefighters, it's just. Certain people are in more departments, so. You know, some of that works if, if there's a personality conflict between. Someone and, and, and the department in the town that they live. You know, but other than that. If it's one person that's joining three different departments, it's not like there's three firefighters. It's one firefighter, so when we'd actually have a fire. Even though each department might be calling it a firefighter for them, there's only one person showing up, so. Um, EMS has been dealing that a number of years, as, as you know, where. You know, many providers work for many different agencies, which works fine to fill the, fill the thing until you have a big incident where that one person is still one person. And did that? Kind of answer you?
Yeah.
And, and actually, it's just, I don't know. Since I have the time, uh, or not.
I've got all night.
Yeah, the. So you, you're talking about, I know that you guys like, uh, provide backup to the other communities and so, so that same issue must imp- impacting the communities around you, so let's, let's say. I don't know, I'll pick on Nobleboro again, let's say Nobleboro is having a hard time maintaining a sufficient number of workers, would you be. Asked to go there more often if, if, if their, if their fire department was sort of undermanned?
Yes, and, and not just to that one town.
Yeah.
You know, we, we. We all kind of keep in context, so if, if, uh, you know, there's a Lincoln Academy playoff game and we know that there's going to be. Five or six people out of town, then, uh, you know, we'll send some text messages to. Some of the other, uh, companies leadership saying, hey, we're, we're going to be pretty short, so. If we get something that's small, you might, we, we might be calling for you earlier. That happens more and more is, uh, especially for daytime type stuff where. You know, a lot of departments are shrinking the size of the number of trucks that they have. You know, the, the number of people involved and the number of people during the day keeps shrinking, so. Uh, we get called more regularly to, I would say. Routine calls that one department should be able to handle by themselves. Just because of lack of, um, available people, not because of. Uh, a lack of competence, but just there's not enough people there.
Is, is there any model around the state where they actually end up like creating regional fire, volunteer fire departments, like. That would cover like multiple panels?
I don't know of any such effort per se, other than. You know, relying more heavily on mutual aid and then, uh. And then having one department that might be a little bit more fortunate at that point, uh. Help and cover, there's, there's certainly been some consolidation, but, uh. I, I think of regionalization of volunteer firefighters is a dirty word, so.
Okay.
Cooperation, you, you were having problems with Nobleboro for a while there, how's cooperation going?
I think I'll just speak to now, we're, we're working very well together. Um, Waldenboro, Newcastle, Damerskada and, and Noble have gotten together to do, uh, some joint trainings, uh, we're putting on a basic fire class to, uh. Uh, together, that's going, uh, pretty well, so. Um, I think, uh. Uh, all the departments that are, are immediate mutual aid. Uh, partners, we're working very well with, including Bremen, Bristol and South Bristol and, and the other ones I mentioned.
Thank you, John. Do we want to dig into some capital reserves?
And that's where the interesting stuff is.
Some reason I doubled up on John's, uh, report in the capital reserves here. Pages.
They were so good, you made it.
Thirty-six.
Yeah, it was pretty thorough, that's for sure.
Pages twenty-five to thirty-six are duplicate. I'm not sure how I catch that, but.
Yeah.
I think your first one's the station. What's on page five of that?
So fire, yeah, first a fire station. Page five.
And. Three years. Up to three years.
Some of these are numbers that are coming to. Are a little different than what John had added to me, and I talked to him briefly about it. Replacement, part of that was going to, potentially being done this fiscal year, some of that may get pushed into next fiscal year, we're not looking at applying for, uh. Climate resiliency or the. The partnership we just joined with the state, the community residency partnership.
Yeah.
We're looking into applying for some improvements to this facility and the fire department. Installation being one of them, lighting potentially. So that may end up pushing that expense into next fiscal year. John wanted to get some installation work done. Inside of those. And then we should let. That's still on there, but maybe shift to the year from what you were thinking last year. And then. The driveway service, I think was one you were looking at in twenty-six. Originally.
Yes.
Push that a year, just with some recent thinking we had on some other. Potential projects, um, I thought maybe it could get coupled with something else, um. Potentially, um, so shift it that a year, a little more time to fund that.
Yeah, I don't know if the, uh, it, it. I hope it will last.
Yeah.
I, it's, it's. It's getting pretty punky out, out in, in front, so. I'll keep my fingers crossed too, but.
We'll keep an eye on it, if it's something we need and can and need to patch, we can try and patch or we can shift, shift gears if we need to shift gears, um. The wastewater upgrade is something. I won't speak to that at all, but I know the current leach field and private system you have there sometimes freezes in the winter time. It is your EOC. There's a big kitchen in there, there's reasons that you don't want that freezing if that's going to be your emergency. Building, whether, even if it's just for your first responders in the middle of a big event, and so.
And, and the leach field's thirty years old, so, um, we were kind of thinking when the time came to replace that, it would make more sense to hook up to. Uh, the sanitary district in, instead of, instead of doing a own private system again.
The bigger, the biggest part of the cost in there, I think is, you know, to anticipate a pump station, um. Which I had reached out the other day to just try and get a ballpark, you know, no estimate or real quote, but just a ballpark and we're probably in the. Twenty to thirty thousand for the pump station. Um, laying the line, digging the trench, if that were to happen when the driveway got done, even if the pump station didn't go in then, I mean, even as, you know, that line, you can reduce some of that extra work from happening. You time it right. So some of that might be born in the driveway resurface cost when that happens.
Yeah, I don't know the elevation change, but I don't think it's much from the station to the other pumping station at the, uh, kind of across the road from the grill there.
Gotcha.
So I, I imagine that's probably where we tie into.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I think, Andy, that differed from the plan last year was, uh, we had been budgeting for a geothermal, uh, replacement for the furnace. And then this past year, the. I guess this current fiscal year, the, the furnace catastrophically failed and needed replacement, so we. Uh, pushed that, that's still on the long-term plan, but we pushed that out, um, to get. The years on the furnace that we just put in.
He didn't have much of a choice there, did he?
Nope, uh, a lot of water, a rug got ripped up, uh.
Working one day and then next day it's not.
It, it. It cracked the, cracked the block, water was spitting out, it was not a. Not pleasant.
All right.
Also, page ten is the fire truck reserve. It's the one that'll garner probably.
Fire one, I mentioned a lot of discussion.
Letter four, Anthony. Right, following that or the. John has a great summary overview, a lot of detail about the apparatus they have.
He's, he's in the capital.
Vacation for why they have what they have or what they're thinking about, so.
Yep.
Plenty there to digest.
Yeah, well, it made a lot of sense.
Um, so I, I guess I can. Probably give a, a highlight of some of the things that have, uh, that have happened, so. Um, we started putting together this apparatus replacement plan, uh, about twelve years ago. And, and at the time we had six, uh, I would say six. Real fire trucks, large, large vehicles. We have since decreased that to, to four, concentrating on multipurpose vehicles instead of, uh. You know, kind of one, one type use vehicles. Uh, and. What we had put in the plan and all along was to try to arrive at a, at a solution that, um, did not require, um. Bonding or borrowing any money in order to, uh, keep up with, uh, with, with the trucks. And we had been putting aside about eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year to accomplish that. Uh, over the last three years, um. Fire trucks have gone up by about sixty percent. Uh, six-zero, not sixteen. And, uh. It, it, it's hard to believe that, that would, that would continue, um, but there's. Uh, many factors in the industry that, uh, indicate that that trend is probably not going to go away, um, right off. Uh, so. If we just look at the ladder truck, for example, um, if we were to order one today. It would be north of one point five million dollars and would arrive in three to four years. If that went up ten percent a year. Um, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar year-over-year increase. And we've been putting aside eighty to ninety thousand for all the trucks, so. We're not even keeping up with the year-over-year price change on that one truck with, uh, with what we've been putting in, so. We outlined what it would take to, um, replace that truck and not borrow any money. And, uh, I think that number's still on, on the sheet, right, Andy?
Go to page eleven, that's the one you prepared.
Yeah, um, so. Uh, we would have to put aside, uh, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. In order to, um. Accomplish that purchase. Uh, starting, uh, in FY twenty-six, uh, signing a contract, locking in the price at. Around one point seven million dollars. And then paying the balance in three years when the truck, uh, when the truck was delivered. So those numbers are, uh, a drastic change from, um, what we've had in the past. And, uh, it's kind of changed our, our thought process on, um. How we're approaching this. Uh, so our, our plan up till this year was to replace engine one first, pull that forward a few years to replace it around twenty-six years old instead of thirty. And try to get a little space between that and, and the ladder. Due to the. Increases, we've, um. Modified that approach to. Uh, get all the life we can out of engine one. Um, when it no longer becomes serviceable or something major fa- uh, fails that, that is, is catastrophic. Um, we would just retire the truck. Uh, replace the ladder as, uh, soon as practicable. Understanding that even if we ordered it today, it would be three to four years before, um, the truck actually arrived. And then when it comes time to, uh, replace the tanker. Uh, we would replace it with something that resembles engine one now. And rely on mutual aid, uh, more heavily for mobile water. So that's what we've tried to identify in, in this plan. I hope it's legible because it went through like four different major changes of, uh, approach. Uh, over the last couple of months.
I got the impression from your narrative that once the order is placed, that price holds. Through the build time.
Mostly.
Yeah. Yeah, yes, yeah.
So, uh, uh, Newcastle is, is going through the process right now of, of, they've gone out for bid, they've received the bids and, and they're reviewing them. One of the other things that's happening in, in, in the fire truck world is, uh, the, the emission standards are completely changing for, I think, two thousand twenty-seven on diesel engines. My current understanding is there's not a single manufacturer that yet hasn't, uh, a motor that meets those emission standards. Um, so all the, uh, companies that are submitting bids have a disclaimer that, um. If the cost of the new motor that is not yet. There is higher than they anticipated, then, um, that extra cost will be borne by the, uh, the buyer. So even though you're signing a fixed price contract, it still has a caveat in there. That the price can go up based on. Um, the unknown cost of, uh, diesel engine that meets the, the new. Emissions.
Tens of thousands. Resigned engines.
Yeah, um, you know, the, I think the engines coming in the trucks now are, uh, engine and chassis now are running. Two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, which used to be the cost of an entire truck.
Yeah.
So.
That long ago.
Um, so there's, there's that piece that is kind of out there, um. That, that's unknown, but yes. When you sign the contract, you'd be locking in the price. And I think that also is one of the reasons the prices keep going up because the build times have stretched out so far. It's really hard for them to judge what their labor costs, the material costs are going to be. On something they're going to deliver in three to four years.
Think you can fundraise that. For the boot. You did a boot drive every day.
We might keep up. With, uh. The gas pricing. The gas prices.
So, I don't know, I, I just, just, um, just think about the economics of this industry in terms of the fire trucks. If, if it, if prices can go up that much, it must be. A buyer's mar- it must be like a seller's market, otherwise there's more demand for fire trucks than, than, than there are people building them. And, and so it must be a pretty profitable business, so. Over time, doesn't it, how many people build fire trucks? Because it just doesn't seem like it, it seems like a market imbalance.
I, I think. It, it, the build times before COVID were, you know, eight to fifteen months. Um, so I think there's been a lot of, uh, labor lost that also pushed out build times. Um, there have been a few companies that have folded, but I think generally there's about the same number of manufacturers of fire trucks. Now as there was five years ago.
Is it like three or ten?
Uh, I'd say we're probably close to ten or twelve major manufacturers in the country. Um, I didn't haven't. Haven't, haven't, haven't done that.
Ten and twelve strikes me that, that should be a pretty robust market for, for fire trucks as opposed to two or three.
Yeah, we solicited bids on the last truck from, I think, six or seven, and all those are still in business and, and that wasn't all of, all of them.
Yeah.
So, uh, they're all doing the same thing, though. One might go up fifteen percent a year, the other might go up twelve and then they might switch the next year, so, uh. I think on the first page of, of the replacement plan, I got numbers from, um, E one. Um, E one's one Rosenbauer Pierce, uh, there's S V I, K M E, there's. Um, uh, Spartan, um, Sutton. Um, so there's quite a few that, but they're all kind of doing the same thing.
Well, the vast amount of raw material that goes into. You know, into, into producing one of those, you know, you've got a lot of.
Yeah, but you can't keep increasing prices fifteen percent every year for perpetuity, it's just, I mean, I mean, the law, I mean, the. It becomes exponential after a while, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the other things coming up is there's a new NFPA standard, so that's going to add, you know, that never takes away from what has to be, so there's going to be. Additional, uh, additional cost to meet the new, new requirements. You get the diesel engine, uh, emission standards, so, um, I. I don't think over the next two or three years, we're going to see prices just stay. After that, they might flatten out a little bit. But the end result is going to be considerably higher than, than they are now.
Well, and like, the vast majority of that, I mean, th- these are hand-built. You know, you're going to consider the, the, um, it's mostly let's and hypercost. They're not, they're not running these down at an assembly line, these are all two orders, you know, he's got, pick out a truck and they order it to their department, so they're all. Hand-built more or less, you have a huge amount of labor cost, especially when you're losing labor in the market everywhere, so.
Yeah, and, and. And some companies have what they call stock trucks, they're not really stock, but they're, they're more stock. Um, and, and Pierce, uh, provided a price, um, to, to Newcastle on one of those and, um. I don't know what I can say and not say, but I'll just say, uh, that, um. For commercial pumpers right now, you're looking at almost seven hundred thousand dollars for a commercial cab truck. And for custom pumpers, you're looking at about nine, and that's not one with a lot of bells and whistles, that's not one that's, um, you know, that. Necessarily even has a generator or some of the other equipment that, that, uh, that, that you might put on it, that's, you know, a, a, a stock pumper. And, uh, you know. We ordered, uh, engine two, I think we paid four sixty-five and we had a bunch of extra things that, that we put in there. Uh, and that was two thousand eighteen, when we took delivery of that. Um, and that truck right now would probably be, uh, close to a million dollars.
The NFPA standards is, God, they never take away, and so there's always the possibility that the twenty to twenty-five year, and he mentions this in his summary, but. At that twenty to twenty-five year useful life that we've been accustomed to could be ten to fifteen potentially in the future. Um, which only compounds it even worse, um. You can be out of date and still run it, but then you're kind of like running, keep yourself open for some liability potentially, um. And that's not just trucks, that's for, I mean, there's a lot of stuff. To Kevin and I the other day that there's a big bill right. Federal level to look at the standards and make some significant changes that will scary.
It, it, it's, uh, O- OSHA is looking at, um, uh. Completely revolutionizing the rules on, on fire brigades and fire companies around the country. And, uh, they've published the new rules and, uh, if they get implemented the way they are now, it would be, uh. Absolutely catastrophic for the volunteer fire services around the country. Almost to the point where, um, within ten years, they might not exist.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Uh, I can a little bit, but I want to be careful not to spread rumor instead of a fact because, um. The document that was published in, in the federal register is six hundred pages and they say it's an is was, but it's, it's, it's not. We had a, a over an hour discussion at the Lincoln County Fire Chiefs Association meeting last night to, about this, trying to get our hands around it, um. And, and everyone's been encouraged to send comments about the pieces that they don't like, but basically, um. They're adopting different NFPA standards into the OSHA piece. So we kind of look at some of the NFPA standards, uh, for air packs, for example, the air pack manufacturers that are going to manufacture the air packs to meet NFPA requirements. Some of the other ones like, uh, you know, uh, uh. Maintenance to fire trucks that say, uh, you, you shouldn't run tires that are over ten years old, we say, okay, yeah, that's there, but. No one's enforcing it, there's, there's no policy, so you usually don't just replace perfectly good tires that probably have two thousand miles on them. Because they're ten years old, uh, so that's one that, that, that they'd be looking at, so the impact of that. Um, the ladder truck has ten tires, um. Their, their truck tires, they're going for about a thousand dollars by the time you buy them, mount them and put them on. That's ten thousand dollars every ten years on that truck. So that's one truck, we have four trucks. The only one that has tires that are newer than ten years old is the newest truck because it's not ten years old yet, so. Um, and one tire on engine one that we had to replace, so it's, um. Uh, just that one piece, which is a small piece, another, another part of it is, uh, required training for anyone that, uh. Would have to command people on a fire scene to be, uh, meet fire officer one and two certification requirements. Uh, additional training, a bunch of, a bunch of things, um, uh, that, you know, they use to say would increase safety. Um, which. Uh, yes, that sounds good, but then when you realize, well, you're probably going to lose thirty to forty percent of your members. And we're already kind of sitting there on the line of being able to handle the stuff with the number we have, um, you start losing that number of people, um, it's.
They would have to be full-time employees to make it work as well.
And then how do you have a full-time fire department in a rural area, you take over EMS, it, it would, it would, uh. If, if all these rules go through, what we have now. For EMS and fire is not going to be the same as what we'd have in a short amount of time. So Andy alluded to, to. Piece I say here, which is NFPA suggests, uh, fifteen-year-old trucks go to a reserve, reserve status for five to ten years. Um, if, if that's one of the standards that gets codified into, into OSHA, then, um, you know, we'd have to. Have different trucks every, within, you know, retire them at twenty-five years. Um, we're much more fortunate than some other departments, um, one of the ones up north just bought what they consider a brand-new truck. It's twenty-three years old, so if this goes in, they'll get two years out of it.
Yeah, so these are all departments, right?
And, you know, they have four trucks. There's already a problem with, like, like, uh, like you said, Dan, on, on, um. Getting trucks now, so if this goes into place and all of a sudden you've got rural departments that are. Having to replace with brand-new trucks because the, the used market's not going to be there either because you can't go buy a twenty-year-old vehicle and get five years out of it. Um, is going to compound the ordering and, and delivery process for fire trucks even worse. And it will drive the price up, it will drive the delivery times out. And there's no possible way with the manufacturing capacity that they'd even be able to implement, um, that rule within any amount of time. So. All those reasons.
Yeah.
Are, are kind of play into, uh, we think, uh, we want to try to pull the. Uh, to, to, to pull the ladder purchase forward, um, as, as much as the boards feel comfortable. Um, because the cost increases just keep going up.
So if you pulled, oh, sorry.
So what you're sort of implying, uh, is that our selling our used. Vehicles would no longer be that attractive?
Off as fire truck use.
If, if all those new rules come into play, then our used equipment is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we haven't, uh, sold a piece of apparatus that has gone to really be fire use in the last fifteen years.
Just checking.
Yeah, um, they've gone to a collector, um, someone that want to fertilize law, uh, fields and, uh. And, uh, uh, one of them bought it for the tractor and, and the old oil tank that became a water tanks now, uh, Hager's, um, tech truck tank, I think, so. So, so those, those were the, those were the, the, the three, but when you talk about a ladder truck, it's not like it's can really be used by anyone else.
Yeah.
Um, and. I don't, I wouldn't even know what to budget that that would be worth in three years because there's too many variables. So I think we assume zero and whatever we get is just, uh, good.
I think one thing we can look at potentially, I was talking to Dan about this yesterday. Now, if we go down the route of, you know, as John's saying, trying to. Get the best price we can, given the factors we know now, um, and try and lock in a purchase sooner. You know, take and get the fifty percent down, take the other fifty percent, the hundred and fifty, hundred thousand dollars and see if we can put it against CD. Knowing that we don't need to touch it for probably at least two years, maybe even three. Um, and see if you can at least make it work for you while you have it and either pay it down sooner or help seed the next, however you want to. Use that as a tool, um, financial tool, but, you know, take advantage of the rates while they're, are where they're at.
And the other thing is this is kind of a ballpark number, uh, after talking to it, to a couple of, of reps, but. The process of specing out a truck and getting a, a real price is, uh. It is a very long process. Um, so it's hard to put a salesman through that process until you're actually getting close to making the purchase, so. Because it's hours and hours of their time, engineering time and everything else to make sure that what they're saying they can build, they can actually build, so, um. It's, it's a best guess.
Yeah. Can I just step back a little bit?
Yeah.
About ladder trucks, I don't know why, I'm just interested, the, uh, how. Um, much do the surrounding communities, the mutual aid. Um, communities rely upon our ladder truck to meet their needs? Because they don't have ladder trucks, right?
Um, right now, uh, in, in the county, there are five ladder trucks. Um, Dresden has a, has one that, um, they got very used because the chief at the time worked for E one and. Gut wind of, of one, they didn't have one before, they pretty much cut it so that they can do chimney fires more safely. Is my understanding, um, they go to Richmond some with it and, and some other towns. Uh, Booth Bay Harbor has one, Wiskasset has one, Walterboro has one and ours.
Yeah.
Um, so other than the outlier of Dresden, um, the other four towns all have, um, similar infrastructure. Uh, where they have, um, you know, high-density buildings packed close together where they have some critical infrastructure such as hospitals, schools, a downtown area, um, so. I would say that the, the four municipalities that kind of have a similar exposure are the ones that have ladders.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, Waldaborough's old ladder, um, uh, got put out of service when, uh, the company that manufactured it went out of business because NFPA standards say. That when you do repairs, they need to be done to, um, original equipment manufacturer standards and they had a little, uh, tilt in the, in, in the ladder. They found plenty of people that said, yeah, we can fix that, but. The American La France was out of business, so they couldn't get anyone to certify that it was going to be done to. Original equipment manufacturer standards. Now that truck was like thirty-six or so years old, so it wasn't like. It was a brand-new truck that, that can do it, but they bought their new truck. Well, the course of when that truck came out of service to when the new one arrived was, I think, eighteen months or so. And we were providing, um, the aerial to, to, to cover their town, uh, during that time. Um, and another time when the truck was out of service for a few months, um, uh, because of, of a manufacturing defect, uh, so. We kind of look at. That is, uh, there's going to be a time where we need the same thing from them, um, but when you start taking. What's already a pretty scarce, uh, resource away, um, it's. Going to fall on fewer and fewer, uh, people. We've got the hospital complex, um, and the downtown area, um. You know, that really, I think, drive the need for us to continue to have a ladder truck.
Yeah, how often do we send it to like Newcastle, Nova Harbor, or Bremen, Bristol?
It's kind of based on the type of call, um, but, you know, probably ten times a year it goes mutually.
And they have a genuine need for a ladder truck in, in those.
When they call for it, yeah. Uh, generally when, um, you know, they strike mutual aid, um, they'll tell us kind of what, what they're looking for. Um, this time of year with chimney fires, um. And it, working off of anything but a ladder truck, if you have a snow cow, covered, covered roof is, is. Uh, a higher risk evolution.
Solar panel covered roof.
Or solar panel covered roof, um, so, um. You know, it's, as a firefighter going up on an aerial and being able to stay on the aerial and, and, uh, take care of whatever you need to do. Whether it be venting or, 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 uh, clearing a chimney or whatnot. It's a much safer evolution than putting up a ground ladder, putting up a, a roof ladder. Uh, climbing up onto both of those and, uh, um, dealing with what you got to do.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And I, 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 I hate to even go down this road, but I was just thinking that, um, we have a ladder truck. They, they have a need for a ladder truck. I get the sharing of pumpers and tankers and all those sorts of things, that's part of the mutual aid going back and forth. But when they need a, a ladder truck, they don't have a ladder truck, um. But they don't compensate us in any particular way for that, do they? Because they're expensive, let's, let's, I mean, that cause.
No. So, so one of the things, one of the things I've talked to Andy a little bit about over the last couple of weeks is, um. As we go down this road of, uh, looking at, again, removing another vehicle from our fleet, um. I think what we've done so far is we haven't really lost capability, the next one we're going to lose capability. Um, is to probably strengthen the mutual aid agreement that, that are documented saying like, you know. Uh, assuming that Damascotta is going to proceed with getting a ladder truck that, you know, we're, we're going to provide this and what we need in return is, um. A commitment that you'll provide either a pumper or, or, uh, water.
Yeah.
So that way we have some sort of commitment on their side that they'll keep up their fleet. It just might be a different type of truck because, um, everyone's going to feel this truck cost thing the same way. And the result is, is likely to be fewer vehicles. So if we get rid of a tanker, we will require, um, at least a whole other company to respond. Um, when we have a need because we won't have the water, um, at our station at all. So. So I think that somewhat addresses the concern, just not quite. It's can't be equivalent because then everyone would be buying the same vehicles, I guess.
It's, it's, yeah, it's kind of a tricky road to go down. When, when you've got a mutual aid mentality. You know, but because then the day comes when, when you're sure glad you've got three pumpers readily available and, and.
Well, I mean, I, uh, I should say this too, like, uh, uh. We're talking, when we talk about SCBA systems, um, you have to have a way to fill those, those packs and you have to have a certification each year that. Um, the air is of a sufficient quality to, to be able to breathe. Um, we don't have a SCBA cascade filling system, uh, either on a truck or at the station. Uh, Newcastle fills all our bottles, so, yes, the cost of a sixty thousand dollar cascade system doesn't offset the cost of a ladder truck, but. It, it's something and each kind of department has something that they provide that, that we don't. Um, so for, if we're, if we're going on a rescue, we've called Bremen, I think, three times in the last two years to come with an ATV to assist us with. Um, you know, uh, getting, uh, an injured, uh, hiker, uh, out of somewhere, um, because they have an ATV, um. Uh, and we even want to step further that with their ATV, uh, when we got a forestry trailer. They bought a ball so that they can haul the forestry trailer in, so there's a lot of that cooperation that's going on behind the scenes, um. so that we're not all doing the same thing and spending the same money.
Anything else?
Equipment?
Equipment.
Yep. Much, much smaller.
Well, we bought the air bottles. That was the only thing, uh, other than, other than packs that, uh, is on the plan.
Most, uh, the current fiscal year. It's my recommendation. I think John, you had it down. John was recommending nothing, uh, towards this one this year. Got that right?
Yep.
Um, I'm proposing trying to kind of, for a lot of these reserves, trying to get them to a point where we can kind of be a little more so we can get away from the big spikes and big decreases, right? Just be a little more level with it. We look ahead, John, there's a lot of needs in the fire department to, for gear and equipment. So I think it's important to still try and keep that level, uh.
Yeah, I'd gone down because I'd gone up on the, on the station one this year and then the next year was going to propose kind of bringing that one back up and the station down a little bit. You, you pushed out the things which accomplishes the same goal in a different way, so.
Long as the parking.
Long as parking.
Yeah.
We're way past the warranty on the parking lot, so.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments, questions on the fire department, fire equipment reserve? Just appreciate the effort every year that John in the department would say.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not only for what they do with the community, but with the budget especially also.
Yeah, it's just a lot of work.
Give us ten years, give me a ten year outlook and what he's thinking is just nice to see and makes it a little easier to kind of do it.
And I was really hoping the furnace would make it a couple more years, but you know.
Just back, you had made a comment that, and it asked a great question about staffing and you had made a comment about, um, guys are pretty good shaving, not sure why, um, but I, I think, uh, from us looking in, uh, we, we can probably attest to the, the, the leadership in, in our fire department, you know, from this top down is a lot of folks, Josh included here, that have been with the fire for a long time and, uh, that, that says a lot and that makes, you know, somebody coming into it, that's what they want to, want to see. So I think it's a good place for folks to start into, so.
Well, some of us have been joking that we need to just wait a couple more years to get the next generation of some of the families that have,
Yeah.
you know, been hallmarks on the, on the fire department, old enough to, to join, but again, unless we have, um, prospects for what they do when they leave our house, um.
Yeah.
You know, the median house now in, in Damerska is about over five hundred thousand dollars. So, um, there's not a lot of jobs that you can work here and, and afford that type of place, so, um, it's, it's again, something that we're investigating right now to try to figure out how to offer some sort of help in that arena.
You can be proactive, so.
Hopefully fast enough.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. We all set with John?
I think so.
Thank you. Run quick for us. Any other questions?
Um, just time check, um, for folks here, we're two hours in tonight. Don't know the desire. Cheryl's already asleep. Desire to try and push a little bit longer. The only thing left in the operating budget is the highway.
Highway, right?
Um, there's a fair amount of capital budget items to talk about. I don't know. Um, do you want to look at what I proposed for a schedule and push those off for another time, or if you want to try and power through?
Power through.
Get through highway.
Yeah.
What?
Power through.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Power.
Thank you, John.
Who needs to stretch, go ahead, yeah. Yep, but we, we might as well, yeah.
Thinking of going anywhere, are you, John? Seriously, it was a serious question. You have.
I didn't hear what you said.
You're not thinking of going anywhere, are you? Going anywhere?
Right now, or?
No. In the state of Maine, kind of thing.
He's not allowed to. We won't let him.
No, my last, uh, uh, my last move, uh, for work was hopefully permanent one, so. On our personnel policy, even though they don't know they fall under it yet, um, it says the chief must be in place for a minimum of twenty years.
No, I was.
There's only been one in the history of a hundred and something years that made twenty, so I.
There's definitely some security in knowing that, I'm just, as a citizen of the town.
Was it fair to say, John, you have some, like, some of us, you have some deep roots in the community, so, yeah.
Yes.
I'm not planning on going anywhere, but who knows?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Play save. Okay.
I was about to start on page forty-two.
Forty-two.
Part of the book.
In which part?
You guys okay staying for a while?
Operating budget.
Yeah, I believe it's seven, but that we should be.
I think you're on, uh, yeah.
Highway Department in the budget books, page forty-two.
Yep.
All right. Um, so going down to that page forty-two, twenty-one dash seventeen leased equipment, um, winds up a little bit. We talked about this last year, trying to maybe consider increasing the line where we rent the equipment, use it in house, if we have the skillset to do it. Now, we did rent an excavator last year for a month. It was rainy, rainy summer. Um, but we spent a lot of time, um, on the property, got this up to the end for the outhouse. Um, moved a few things on the property to level off and just create more space, usable space. And then they spent, oh God, uh, at least a week, if not close to two on brand.
Brand road.
Um, doing some much needed drainage work there. Um, the list was longer than what we had accomplished, but, you know, again, it was a tough, tough goal, but we did a little bit of work on Church Street as well. While they were there at the end towards school. Um, so proposing that we look at it again, um, for, to try another month. It's about forty-three, forty-five hundred bucks unless you get thrown a ditch and bucket in there, it's a little bit more, but um, that gave us a month's worth of time, a little flexibility, but July and August is kind of the time for us to do it. Not setting up town for floats or tend into some other things. It's dry typically. And so that's, that, that's up a little bit, um, just to afford us the time to lease some of that equipment. The major changes include, uh, vehicle repairs, forty, page forty-three, line thirty dash twenty-four. Just acknowledging some of the equipment's getting a little, um, the whacker was, I think, in twenty sixteen or seventeen. It's in again right now, um, for, for repairs. Uh, we paid a fair amount last year on, I mean, we're getting to the point where it's almost the annual price of a payoff for a new piece of equipment. Um, and so usually when you start to get to the point where you can have a new one, less downtime. Um, it's, you know, just reset that clock on that, so wait and see what, what they, what they say this time and when it's in there to see if it's something we need to move up on our timeline, but um, that's just acknowledging that the trucks and the equipment's getting a little bit older, twelve thousand five hundred.
And we'll probably use it what it's supposed to be used for moving forward.
Yes. Yeah, you know, part of it is, you know, it's, the department has a dump truck and this one piece of machine pretty much, and there's a lot of attachments for it, which are great. Um, to have, but, you know, I think, you know, that being said, we also say we're overworking it, but it's definitely getting a lot more work than what a two-person, small-town department would probably expect it to see. Um, and so that's part of the factor in the replacement. Insurance, same thing as explained before with some of the other departments. Insurances are up a little bit, some of that's tied to which, um, they're having been any workers' comp type claims, so. I know, I know, but that number is driven, if you're not aware, you're not aware, that number is driven a lot of times by any claims you might have. Um, and those can really, um, skyrocket that, that price there. Um, in future years, and it usually takes three or four years for that to fall off, but I think we've been pretty good lately. Getting into the highway maintenance, um, proposing keeping culver allocation about the same, uh, winter salt and sand, that's sort of the salt and sand we purchased for the sidewalks and property we maintain, it's a short list. Um, just pulling that down from three thousand to nine hundred. I'm going to forge about ten tons, um, at this year's price of all. Um, general maintenance. It's going to have a catch-all for miscellaneous things that we need to get to. I've got it in there, ditch, shoulder work, sidewalk repair, drainage breaks, et cetera. Uh, line stripings, just a quick point there, the difference between the department request and mine is in the note that tried to capture it, there were some folks that came last year from P S A C and asked the board to consider doing crosswalks twice a year. Um, and so that's my estimated cost to do the crosswalks a second time, the eleven thousand and the sixteen.
And honestly, Andy, you can, some of those, they're already gone on the main street. They're so hard to see.
Thank you.
That's an annual, an annual process. I think we've only done them, I think, once a year historically. Um, yeah. You know what? That is just what happens. So acknowledging our community and the, and the needs of the desires, that's why I threw in that second one, just you, you can see what that estimated cost would be for a second painting.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Um, the
What is the difference then between the line striping and the main street painting and sweeping?
Sure, so the, the.
Cause we had budgeted a thousand dollars last year for that, not budgeting nothing.
So that one, my understanding, I think historically that one has been a line item that we have a machine that we can do painting with. Um, we, so it's, it's a line that I believe we charge the supplies off to and we do it. And then the other one's more of a contracted service where we're paying someone else to come in and do it. We had someone come in last, we didn't do most of the parking spots in the, in the town parking lot last year because they were generally there and weren't there exactly when the parking lot project would start, so, um, but all of Main Street we'd hired out, um, with the exception of, I think we did some of the parking stalls behind Main Street. Cause we did some of them on Main Street too, but we had the company do the crosswalks last year when they were in Newcastle, they came across and did our crosswalks, um, especially some of the busier intersections, um. You know, so our crew's not coming in at two AM, one AM, trying to get that done themselves. I mean, it gets a lot slower process for us.
Can you also toss in a, a peek at the Bristol blinking light? I'm not saying it needs to be done twice a year kind of thing, but if somebody just turns over and looks it over.
Um, I don't know if that captured.
Yeah, explained it. Shouldn't be further conversations about crosswalk.
Yeah. Um, getting to the payroll lines on page forty-six. A pretty substantial budgeted increase for overtime, um, they have justification is it, with two employees, it would allow a hundred hours each, it's not guaranteed, but it would allow a hundred hours each. Um, it's been a very mild winter, um, so far. Um, but you get, you get a twelve inch snowstorm on a Saturday or Friday night into a Saturday and you know, we might be finding ourselves eating away that pretty quick or take advantage. Now, like in last year, we had, I think, twenty hours or so overtime, just taking advantage of the dry days when we had the excavator. Um, still work to do when it's raining, but so can you come in on a Saturday? Can you stay a little bit later while the weather's good? Um, and so it's, you know, a hundred hours over the course of a full-time, you know, two thousand eighty hours in a year. A hundred hours is all of a sudden goes pretty quick when you factor storms on the weekends again, windstorms, snowstorms. Um, looking at that, so it's, and I think it's worth noting that, um, for a lot of years, um, with only one person or sometimes one and a half people, and even the full-time person we had maybe wasn't putting down the overtime they were working, um, so the budget doesn't reflect maybe.
Yeah.
All the hours that probably went in.
Yeah.
Unsurmountable soul didn't put it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of hours were not.
Wow.
Not surprised.
I'm not surprised either.
Yeah. I think it's not something I expect of the staff to just give, 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 so that's something that we need to compensate that for and.
At least a pizza.
Yeah.
Have we sworn?
Cheryl's, you said you're not putting in any active time, is that what you said?
Andy, I had a.
Sorry.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah.
Um, that's the page.
We can go back to the days when George Hutchins used to come in and paint the crosswalk.
Um, under eighty-six thirty-one, we seem to have spent well over budget year to date. And is this a timing variance? And if it isn't, should we expect higher expenses in twenty twenty-five?
Um, you should not expect higher expenses in twenty twenty-five. Uh, the big expense there was, uh, for the septic tank to be involved this year.
Okay.
Um, so that was a one-time purchase, if you will, and that we don't have to repeat, hopefully for quite a long time.
I have a lot of questions on this page.
Yeah.
Just gonna keep going. Um, on eighty-nine thirty for the public landing maintenance, um, and given our recent experiences there, might we want to anticipate some higher expense expenses? You know, climate change seems to have accelerated her pace.
We're getting new docks.
Well, yeah, this line, we, we've got it, I mean, it's set up for dock maintenance, um.
Right.
And so the, um, as Josh just mentioned, we are getting ten new docks this year, and so the the cost that would have been for lumber or hardware that we might have had to charge off to this or going. Um, bought some lights last year, most of which will hopefully be in service this year, um, just some solar dock lights. Um, so it affords us a little bit of a budget just to be able to get the hardware and maintain the infrastructure that's there. Um, but I don't know if you wanted to back to expand, help me and visualize what you were thinking.
No, it's just that the three hundred and three year to date expense does not include any of the work that needed to be done in that area after the January storms. And so knowing what those expenses are going to end up being might cause us to think about what the total for next year should be, but knowing that there are ten new docks there.
Well, we shouldn't have.
Gonna be stronger and.
We shouldn't have any expenses from the January storms because of the docks and the floats are out. The only thing is that might need adjustment are some of the pylons.
Right, yeah, maybe a little bit of cold patch, rip ravel on the boat ramp, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
But the expenses we incurred really for the storm for labor, uh, we bought some material for sandbags, um, you know, but that would hit a different line item. Um, but the, the way we've got this chart, I mean, I guess this expense line setup, it, there isn't really a lot of direct. I mean, if there's damage to say like the riverfront, maybe we've got huge damages to infrastructure, it's something we're gonna take some time, takes time to get back, but we would apply, um, through the FEMA, declare it through the FEMA storm declaration if there was one. Um, some of that money might come back to us, but I think just the way we've got this particular line set up, it just doesn't hit that one.
Okay, I, thank you for clarifying the public landing versus the.
It's a good point, though. I mean, we will see more and more. I mean, I do keep an eye on the river park, if you will, there. Every time we get another big tide with some wave action, I just hope that the rocks don't fall that time. Um, but you can kind of see some have fallen and when I see that there's, um, a rock that's.
Right over to Pemecu.
When a rock has been displaced, um, I, I've, you know, explained to Merrill, our worker, I said, it's, it's good to either take a shovel, your foot and kind of push down on it because it's unsuspecting person that wants to get close to the edge there, doesn't realize that there might be a foot of that grass undermined. Um, and so just something you gotta keep an eye on and intend to. Um, uh, road forming position, uh, there's an increase projected there, um, that's the position Hugh had filled, uh, and retired in November, so um, that's, I just made an offer to someone this week on that, and so we'll be putting them in. Yeah. Afford us a budget to try and keep up with what I'm seeing in other towns, you know, for that position and, you know, towns of our size that might have that position. Um, and that responsibility, so that should afford us what we need to make that happen.
You missed the party. We had cake and everything.
Seriously.
Nice little ceremony here for him, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marilyn took him to the Bristol diner for his send-off lunch. He, that's where he wanted to go.
Yep.
Wish I had a chance to say goodbye. Moving on, okay.
And going down through, I mean, a lot of the increase, um, that we've got budgeted for next year, a lot of it's born on the plow contract. Um, twenty thousand increase on the downtown contract and another one thousand plus on the highway one, so forty thousand dollars of the eighty-one that was being presented. Fifty percent of that's on the plow contract, so we're fixed on that. Get, um, get through this winter and there's two more on the. Other changes there, um, ADA compliance. Um, just acknowledging it's, it's, it's a little bit more, um, but acknowledging that we've got some ADA compliance, things that we're a little behind on and we need to, we need to deal with. Um, we did find some of those cast plates, um, that usually you dig a hole, pour the concrete and get it just right. Um, one of the precast companies, you can buy a plate already cast in concrete, so we're hoping that'll cut down on our time to install them. Um, and the mess that might incur with that, and so we're going to try, we bought a couple in the fall, we're going to try and put them in this, the spring. See how those work, but we've got some, um, placements, I think, of some of the pedestrian activated beacons that probably need to be reconsidered, um, just because of where they were placed. Um, that's something I'd, I'd reached out to P S A C and suggested that maybe that's something we can work together on and kind of do an assessment of what we have, um, and how we can bring them up so they're meeting ADA compliance if they don't now.
I'd like to say thank you for the sword.
Yeah, it was a long time, a long time. Yeah, it was a long time, long time coming, I think.
No, but they just did a very nice elaborate setup there, so thank you.
With that, those are the high points in the in that budget. I don't know if there's probably some more questions or. Anything jump out at you that's needs to be answered.
The revenue. I had a question if. Year-to-date, we're on track to have about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Are we anticipating fewer automobiles this coming year, or could we potentially? To offset some of the other expenses and maybe be able to pay those crosswalks that I'm going to come.
Um, I think, I don't know if we talked, it just feels like we deja vu a little bit. Maybe it was in the admin line with regards to.
It's hard to hear.
One of the challenges with the excise tax calculation is this was year-to-date through December that. These payments don't come in in equal twelfths. And so again, the purchases of these vehicles sometimes fall with tax years and advantages. Um, to maximizing deductions there or sales. Um, so it's it's hard just based on the six-year year-to-date, six-month year-to-date to say that. It'll be double. We look back at the previous three years.
Two years ago, it was, you know. Fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars more, so it looks like it has been increasing over the years. And maybe you just have the percentage increase that it goes to what we actually collected in twenty twenty-three, because that's a known number.
For that particular year. Right, and so certainly the M S R Ps, these vehicles are a lot higher than they were three years ago, so. If people continue to buy new cars at the same rate they have, yes, we can assume we're going to end up with more. If. The high purchase price is slowing the the rate of new purchase, new vehicle purchases, because it's based on the M S R P and not the sale price, I think that's where my colleagues will get into the analysis.
Bought a new truck on Tuesday. I'll I'll be in next week to take care of that number.
Use one, so our contribution will be very small next week.
Car sales are down.
Right, so it's a number because it's such a large. I mean, I, I guess I'll just, I do worry, we can certainly look at a higher estimated revenue. We just need to be mindful of in the middle of the budget year. If it does fall short. We're cutting back on the expense. And so if you budget a little bit less and it does go over, it goes to the fund balance and you can pull from it next year at least. Um, but I. For me, budgeting, I'd rather err on the side of it might not all get there just because it came in last year, but I don't want to assume it'll be here. The next.
Since I am new to this budgeting process here. Um, is that then something that we could be looking at before making our final recommendations as we have more data, probably for the first quarter of? Twenty twenty-four?
You'll have the first. You'll have January and February and part of March. By the time the. Warrant needs to be set. I mean, March will be in, but. You know, what I've proposed would be for a draft warrant. So your numbers are kind of not deadlocked, but you know, getting pretty close that first week in April. Um, but we could give you an update, a refresh, you know, for the next, the budget committee's going to be diving into that. Um, to see what we've got for the following.
These were the numbers we have to stay with as we go through our.
No.
Cheryl just shook her head.
We can get you some updated numbers when you do talk about it. No, these are not the numbers you have to stick. So the process will be the, as we come out of these kind of presentations, the select board per charter will go through, make recommendations. Based on what's been presented. Those recommendations come to the budget committee for your review, and then you can come up with. Uh, yes, I agree. No, I don't agree. And here's an alternate number. The warrant articles.
Go first.
Yes.
Makes it much more.
The warrant articles will show if there's a difference between the recommended number between the select board and the budget committee. And those will be on there for the voters to see, you know, this group recommended X. Um, last year's warrant articles were read to see what some, and so the voter, the motion literally had to call a number. Um, and typically, most people would use one of the two. Yeah, some discussion on the floor with the discrepancies and different. So no, you don't have to stick to these as proposed. Any other questions on highway? All right. Okay.
I'm just asking. Are we almost done?
We're gonna do capital reserve, the highway, we're gonna do E M A.
But nothing that we're voting on or anything.
E M A budget, we didn't cover yet.
Yeah, but we still gotta do highway, wanna do capital.
Yeah, there's a bunch of capital ones. You want to jump to the highway capital? You want to hit E M A and get to the operating? And then we get started, gets us out of the budget book.
And then we can do it separately if we had to for capital.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, what page?
Thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven.
Page thirty-seven, E M A.
Emergency management.
So the differences here is just my rec, well, the increase is my recommendation to increase the stipend a little bit. Okay, yeah. It's it's not, it's not, it's not much of a change. The only, I'll just, I'll just say for clarification, the reason that the department request is, doesn't have a number in there is only because I just didn't reach out to. Our E M A director, Steve. To touch base with him on it.
He's not gonna be upset, is he, Terry?
Yeah, it'll be good, so.
He spends many hours, though. You all need to know that. On the phone.
Yeah, whenever there's, especially after a storm, I mean, there's the FEMA process. I guess they say there's no such thing as a free lunch. You know, it's just sometimes not worth, you know, if the threshold and damage that you're reporting is less than probably. Ten grand, fifteen grand, it's almost not worth the amount of time. I mean, it is months and sometimes years before that's settled. And the administrative time to do that, I mean, and then you see the resources they bring in to meet with you. I'm thinking, I think you've just spent. In total, between us and them, more to have these meetings, it actually costs us to respond.
I think that's been estimated. Cheryl's saying too.
Yeah, but if you've got a bad disaster, I mean, with what happened in those storms in January, you know, for some of those towns, we are very lucky with what. It is certainly worth it if you've got major road failures, bridge and culvert washouts. I mean, it is a process that you can go through and is certainly worth it. As painful as it might be.
Yeah, I just, la- last night, we were discussing Booth Bay Harbor. Lost sixteen hundred feet of water line. And and they don't know how they're gonna replace it because they lost all the road. They lost sixteen hundred feet of road that the water line would go under. And and it's gonna be a long while before they're gonna be able to rebuild the roads. So where are they putting the?
Yeah.
Where are they putting the water line? Yeah, I see them up because they've got seven brand-new housing units ready for occupancy, except they don't have water. And they can't, they don't know how they're gonna get water to them.
Capital reserves.
If folks want to keep going, we can do that. Um, I don't know, check in with folks.
Mary, you have to be someplace at seven.
How long, how long?
Depends on how many questions. There's quite a lot in.
Andy, if if we're gonna.
Have any questions on this one.
So you're gonna be at the budget meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, I'm wondering if capital, if it's, if folks are comfortable with, is it select, and we can go to the schedule if you want and can talk about it there. The next time the select board meet to talk, it's like a budget workshop, like if they want to start with capital, we can just kind of split little presentations up and can spend them. Um, I can go into more detail with each of you when you meet and talk about them if you want to try and.
Sounds good.
Um, so with the schedule, I printed, I think, most folks should have. Yeah, and there's some copies on the table there. They didn't make it in the book. Try to set up those, see, you can just grab the packet. Showed the crossouts where it said the date and I I missed it, but the. Select board, when they met last night for the regular meeting, it sounded like we weren't gonna try and meet next week. Um, some folk are still out of town, um, so they'll. Had it on there for them to do the next, their first kind of review on the sixth, that first week in March, there's a regular meeting that night. Um, in the past, we've met a little bit earlier, ahead of that meeting, if you have something you want to do. I might just need some feedback from both groups on what I've proposed, if these work and you want to hit these dates or not, so we can get it up for the public to know about.
Four thirty?
Yep.
Andy, where were the dates?
Um, of course, I didn't send it digitally, but I have March sixth would be a select board meeting.
Right.
So to have the board do budget review, select board do budget review ahead of the select board meeting.
Come in at four thirty?
No, this is for the select board to do a budget review. So the the process now, you've done your, kind of, bring, come together, hear the budget. Next step is for the select board to do a more in-depth review and discussion and recommendation. Um, the recommendation, once they send one, will be sent to the budget committee, and so. The thought was whatever gets recommended on the sixth could be available for the budget committee to discuss and review on the eleven. If you want to do that. And so I try to stagger those and just whatever comes out of the select board can go to the budget committee, if that makes sense.
And and for the budget committee sessions. What time are you recommending?
Already on the calendar, right? I thought I wrote.
I don't have it on the calendar, no.
I've proposed dates, but I don't have times, and I just confirmation that when we presented, I presented this before, I was to say, will these work? And there was some comment, question and and discussion about holidays and such, and I just need to hear back from each group. Are these dates okay? And then the time you'd like to have your meetings, if there's a set time. Um, for yours.
I like four thirty.
I like four thirty.
Okay.
Connie.
Wake up. Four thirty works.
Yeah, I do have the provider agent, provider agency requests are due March fifteenth. They don't come under review of either group. Um, you know, as as they come in, they're a petition with a proposed warrant article on it, and so those just go on the warrant. And certainly we'll share those as they come in after the fifteenth, but. And they won't really be up for debate and recommendations. And then the hope would be that the select board will have a draft warrant on the first meeting in April, and the second meeting in April will be approving the warrant, the final warrant.
Moving right along.
Somewhere in between, we'll get an update from our assessors agents about what they're seeing for. Valuation changes for next year. The the county taxes went up a fair amount because our assessment went up twenty-five percent from last year. Um, the state valuation has us considerably higher, and so the increase we made this past year on our on our base. Our assessment, local assessment, to try and get to, so we did get to the full value of the homestead. It's just been knocked down a fair amount by the state valuation.
Be knocked down again.
Right. So. Yep, so I I think Rob's in next week potentially. So I just had to ask Ed to put a bug in Rob's ear and need to know soon so that the board can hear from him, you know, what they're thinking. Last year, we knew they were looking at a fifteen or so percent increase across the board. Um, going into this, it'll just be nice to know where that sits and how that might affect what we're doing.
Make a motion to the budget committee that we adjourn. Second, third, fifth.
Second, second, ten seconds, all is available. All right.
So we're sorry, we're thinking four thirty on the thirteenth as well. That's fine, yeah.